Good morning. At this time of year, the Board considers those issues that are related to boundary changes and the capital improvements program. Prior to this morning, the interim superintendent provided to the Board her interim superintendent's recommended fiscal year 2023 capital budget in the FY 2023 through 2028 capital improvements program, along with Supplement A, interim superintendent's recommendation for the Gaithersburg Cluster Elementary School Number Eight Boundary Study, and Supplement B, interim superintendent's recommendation for the Bethesda Somerset and Westbrook Elementary Schools Boundary Study. Today, the Board will hold its third work session regarding these recommendations, followed by three hearings for the public to provide testimony on November 2nd, 4th, and 8th. There will be one final work session on November the 9th. If alternatives are offered today or on November 9th, the Board will hold a hearing on November the 16th. If no alternatives are offered, there will be no hearing on November the 16th. As noted during our work session on October 26th, if there are items the interim superintendent is recommending that Board members wish to modify, it would be helpful for affected communities to know about a potential alternative prior to the public hearings. Therefore, I am again suggesting that we identify those alternatives today. If Board members wish to identify any alternatives today, they should do so through a motion. If there is a second, a vote will be taken in a brief discussion of the alternative. A majority of Board member votes is required in order to place the alternative before the public for comment, along with the interim superintendent's recommendation. If the alternative is adopted today by the Board, staff will notify the affected communities so they may testify to the interim superintendent's recommendation and the alternative. Please keep in mind that a vote to place an alternative before the Board does not commit Board members to support the alternative when final action is taken, nor does it preclude the Board from making any changes to the CIP when it takes final action. The Board is scheduled to take final action on these matters on Thursday, November the 18th. Dr. McKnight, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, President Wolf, and good morning to Board members and all of our viewers for this session. This is our third meeting to review my recommendations for the FY 23 capital budget.
Now, let me go back and let us introduce our Board members before we go that far, because I wanted to do that, starting with Dr. Daka.
Good morning.
Ms. Smadrowski.
Good morning, Rebecca Smadrowski.
Ms. Silvestri.
Good morning.
Ms. Evans.
Good to see everyone, good morning.
Ms. Harris.
Good morning, everyone.
Ms. Looney.
Good morning.
And could I also get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous. Go ahead, Dr. McKnight.
Thank you, President Wolf. So again, thank you so much, good morning, Board members, and thank you to all of our viewers who are participating in this work session today. This is our third meeting to review my recommendations for the FY 23 capital budget and the FY 23 through 28 capital improvements program. Today, our staff is going to present a cluster-by-cluster review of all capital and non-capital items included in my FY 23-28 CIP recommendation. Also today, Board members will be asked to be able to ask any additional questions regarding my two boundary study recommendations, the Gaithersburg Cluster Elementary Number Eight Boundary Study and Bethesda Somerset and Westbrook Elementary Schools Boundary Study. I know we presented that earlier this week, and so you've had an opportunity to really look at that, hear from stakeholders, and today engage in discussion. We look forward to our work with you during the coming weeks to prepare the final request by the Board for review by the County Council, as well as the County Executive. So with that, we'll go ahead and jump into our discussion today. I'll turn it over to Ms. Jeanne Dawson, Chief of Finance and Operations, and the staff. We are here with Ms. Carmen Hoss and Seth Adams will be joining us as well for this presentation. So at this time, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here today. As Dr. McKnight said, we will be going through a cluster-by-cluster review, and then we will open it up again to highlight any questions around the boundary scope, enrollment projections, guiding parameters, anything that you have questions about. And then, we also, again, look forward to your feedback or any other options or alternatives that you put on the table. So with that, we'll start with Adrianne Karen Mihas to begin our walkthrough. Thank you.
Morning. So if we could have the slide, first slide, please? Okay, could go to the next slide, thank you. So for the agenda, again, for today, we are going to review the superintendent's recommendation for FY 23 to 28 CIP. We're going to go cluster-by-cluster review. Thought this would be helpful if there are any specific questions related to the clusters and the projects within them, and then again, any questions that any Board members may have on Supplement A or Supplement B. Next slide, please? Next slide. So I just wanted to go through this again. There were, we heard some community questions regarding this and just making sure that we understood what we were looking at. So again, the top line was the Board of Education's request for the amended CIP. The next line is the County Executive's recommendation. So you can see, the Board of Education's request last year was 1.713 billion. The County Executive recommended 1.678 billion, which was a difference of about 54 million. The Council adopted 1.618 for MCPS over the six-year period, so that was a difference of 112.8 million, almost $113 million over the six-year period. And again, the bottom chart just represents sort of where we have been and where we are going. You can see that there has been a decline over the last three years, starting with FY 19 to 24, from the 24 CIP to the amended CIP, and then from the 21 to 26 CIP, and then the amended CIP. And so, this is just representing sort of where we are now, the adopted CIP again at 1.618 billion. Next slide, please? So again, just looking at the funding sources, we do have five funding sources, and the largest one is general obligation bonds. This is from the adopted CIP for FY 22, so you could see it's about, general obligation bonds is about 37%. State aid was about 25%. Then, recordation tax, 23%, school impact tax, 9%, and current revenue at 6%. A couple of things to note here, state aid, typically, the County Council puts state aid in the fiscal year that we are working with, so in this case FY 22, and it's usually the actual amount received, what was approved by the state. For FY 22, this last past May, the County Council did put in that amount that was approved for our annual allocation, but did approve also, and did include an additional, and I think it was about $23 million, of an assumption of state aid that we will receive based upon the Bill to Learn Act, which we discussed at the last meeting, or the meeting on Monday. So that's why that number is a little higher than typical, because we've been receiving over the past years anywhere between 40 and 50 million, and that is an increase because of that assumption in state aid. Next slide. So when we talk about general obligation bonds, that those are set based upon the spending affordability guidelines that are approved by the County Council. This year, in October, this past, this October 5th, the County Council adopted the SAGs, Spending Affordability Guidelines, and they adopted it $90 million less than the prior year, and you can see to the chart on the right, the approved amended 21 to 26 CIP included spending affordability guidelines of 1.77 billion. We are now at 1.68 billion over the six years, so that will definitely have an impact on our capital program. Next slide, please? And again, what is included in the interim superintendent's recommendation, all projects wherein the approved CIP are recommended on their same completion schedule. In addition to that, there's funding for, additional funding for seven previously approved projects that needed increases due to construction costs and prevailing wage rate premiums. We do have two new addition projects for Burtonsville and Greencastle, two new major capital projects for Piney Branch Elementary School and Eastern Middle School, planning funds only, so they do have TBD completion dates until construction funds are included in the six-year CIP. And we do have a few countywide, new countywide initiative projects, and additional funding for some countywide systemic projects. Next slide. So this is where the additional money really is, has an impact on the CIP. These are, as I just previously said, for seven projects, and you can see those seven projects that are there. The second column indicates what is in the approved CIP, so for example, Crown High School, the approved CIP has a total of $136.2 million for that project. If you go across towards the end, after the solid black line, you can see the two next columns, it says construction cost increases, prevailing wage increases. You can see what has been recommended for those projects, so that those projects can continue. And so you can see 23 million for construction cost increases for Crown, and for about 19.9, almost 20 million dollars, for prevailing wage increases for that project, so that brings that total project to 179.25 million. And so, the two arrows at the bottom, what I've tried to do is sort of do the comparison to what is approved with what is being recommended for each of those seven projects. And the last column shows the difference, so you can see it's an increase of 184.5 million over the six years for those seven projects, to keep them on schedule and to do their projects as they were in the approved CIP. Next slide, please? So this last slide is just showing the approved versus the recommended. We always talk about the first two years of the CIP are the ones that we really look at, it's what the Council and the County Executive really look at, and the six years, because we do have a biennial CIP process. So what I wanted to do here was show the comparison between the first two years of the adopted CIP and the first two years of the recommended CIP. And I added from the slides on Monday, the little notes in each of the bullets, because there, I think there was a little confusion. So, so the first bullet indicates 103.7 million dollar increase in FY 23. That's comparing it to the adopted FY 21, not comparing it to the 23, the FY 23 in the adopted CIP. So this slide was really showing comparison, first two years in adopted versus first two years in recommended. So, the second bullet, 146.8 million increase in FY 24, and that's compared to FY 2022 in the first chart, in the top chart. So again, second year of an adopted CIP compared to second year in the recommended CIP. And then you could see the 119.4 million increase in the six-year period, and of course, that's compared adopted versus recommended. Next slide, please? So there is one non-capital recommendation, separate and apart from the two supplementals, and that is to create the new service area for Clarkspur elementary school number nine when it opens in August of 2023. The recommended scope for that boundary study includes Clarkspur, Gibbs, Little Bennett, and Wilson Williams Elementary Schools. No middle schools or high schools are recommended in the scope of the boundary study. And based upon the approved schedule for the construction project and the opening of the new elementary school, the recommendation is to conduct the boundary study in spring 2022, with Board of Education action in November of 2022. Next slide, please? So that is all regarding the CIP and the numbers, and now we can get right into the cluster-by-cluster review. So next slide, please? So Bethesda Chevy Chase Cluster, so I've divided this into capital projects and non-capital projects. So the capital projects, we do have in the out years of the CIP, the Bethesda Chevy Chase Walter Johnson Cluster Elementary School, does have a TBD completion date. There are only planning funds in the recommended CIP, there were only planning funds in the adopted CIP. Those planning funds start in FY 2025. The second project is Westbrook Elementary School, it's the classroom shell build-out, and it is scheduled to be completed August of 2022. And the non-capital item for Bethesda Chevy Chase Cluster is the Supplement B, which is the recommendation for the Bethesda Somerset and Westbrook Elementary Schools Boundary Study. Next slide. Winston Churchill Cluster, the only item in this cluster, we did have a proposed addition in the last, in the adopted CIP, I think it might have even been in the 21 to 26 CIP. Their projections at that time indicated they would be over the threshold of 200 seats, and therefore, a recommendation was included in the CIP and actually adopted in the CIP for a proposed addition project. There was no money, we were going to start a feasibility study. Based upon their enrollment projections in the 23 to 26 CIP, they do not meet that 200-seat threshold, they are below 200 seats, and therefore, we will continue to monitor enrollment, Next slide, please. Clarksburg Cluster. So we have two capital projects. We have the Damascus High School Major Capital Project with a August 2026 completion date. That project is looking to, of course, address the aging infrastructure of the school as well as expand the school to address the overutilization at Clarksburg High School. And that had been talked about when we, even when we did the boundary study for Clarksburg Northwest and Seneca Valley. The second capital project again is Clarksburg Elementary School Number Nine to be completed 2023. There is an FY 2023 appropriation recommended for construction cost increases. The non-capital items again is the, is the, to create the service area for the new Clarksburg Elementary School Number Nine. Again, the four schools that are being recommended to be included in that boundary study, and again, to be conducted in spring 2022 with Board of Education action November of 2022. Next slide. Damascus Cluster. There are three capital projects. Again, the first one is Damascus High School. Again, is the major capital project to be completed August of 2026. There is a FY 2023, that should say 2023 appropriation to begin the planning for this project. Then Damascus Elementary School. Damascus actually, and Woodfield are both two schools that have been identified as part of this recommendation to identify a scope for a major capital project, and we talked about that the other day. They are included in the '23 to '28 CIP. There are no funds for those individual projects. It is just for feasibility studies to determine the programmatic capacity and building needs for those schools. Therefore, both of them, of course, have TBD completion dates until we get through that process. Next slide, please. Down County Consortium. So I broke this up into high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools, since there are so many. So first, we'll go through the capital projects for the high schools. John F. Kennedy High School has an addition that will be completed this August 2022. Then we have Northwood, the addition facility upgrade. And there were some questions about that. It was originally identified as an addition and facility upgrade. So in the project description forms, our PDFs, it says that. But I just want to reiterate for those that are watching, that it is a tear-down and replacement. The scope has not changed. It is just identified by that title, because that's how it started. That's how the project started. It is a completion date of August 2025. There is an FY '23 appropriation for construction cost increases and construction funds, which we saw on the previous slide. And then the third project is the reopening of Charles Woodward High School. Again, a completion date, it's a two-phase completion date of August 2023 and then August 2025. The 2023 will open up as a holding school for Northwood High School for two years, and then will open as a new high school in 2025. There is an FY '23 appropriation for construction cost increases and construction funds as well. At the middle schools, Eastern Middle School has a recommended major capital project, the TBD completion date, because there are no construction funds. These are planning funds only, being recommended in FY '23. And construction funds will be considered in a future CIP. Parkland Middle School, their addition will be completed in 2023. There is an FY '23 appropriation to complete the project. It's the balance of construction funds. Odessa Shannon Middle School, that is a replacement project that will be completed in August of 2022. Silver Spring International Middle School, it is an addition project to be completed in 2024. The previous adopted CIP had all of the funds already appropriated, so no additional appropriations are necessary. Next slide, please. At the elementary school level, we have Highland View Elementary School with a completion date of August 2025. Again, those, those funds have already been appropriated in a previous CIP, so no additional funds are needed. Oakland Terrace, this is a major capital project, again, one of the 13 that were identified. So it is, it is to do a feasibility study to identify the programmatic capacity and building system needs. No completion date is recommended. There are no funds for the project, just feasibility study. Piney Branch Elementary School is a major capital project. This one also does have a TBD, but has recommended planning funds. So we are going to start the planning process for this project. But no construction funds are included in the recommended CIP, so those will be considered in a, in a future CIP, therefore, the TBD completion date. And Woodland Elementary School, it is a major capital project to be completed in August of 2023. There is an FY 2023 appropriation recommended for construction cost increases and balance of funding for the project. The non-capital, actually, I previously discussed, but we can go through it again. Again, Northwood High School is going to relocate for two years to the Charles Woodward site as a holding school while they go under construction for their project. That will start in the 2023 school year. They will be there for two years, return to Northwood High School in 2025, and then Charles Woodward will open as a new high school in the 2025 school year. Next slide. Gaithersburg Cluster, there are three projects. Crown High School, which is a new high school, which is scheduled to be completed August 2026. There is an FY '23 appropriation for construction cost increases and construction funds. Gaithersburg Middle School is another one of those schools, the 13 being identified for a major capital project. So we will start a feasibility study to identify the programmatic capacity and building system needs with no completion date. Gaithersburg Cluster Number Eight is a new elementary school and will be completed in August of 2022. No additional funds are needed. They've all been previously appropriated. The non-capital items in the Gaithersburg Cluster, Supplement A, which we have reviewed, is to, to, to have the new service area for Clarksburg Cluster Elementary School Number Eight. And in addition to that, the capacity study approved for the Watkins Mill Cluster. We did talk about the other day that, that this capacity study is looking at the elementary schools in the Watkins Mill Cluster, as well as adjacent clusters. And Gaithersburg Elementary, Gaithersburg Cluster has been identified as one of those adjacent clusters. The capacity study was conducted this past summer, and we'll be looking in a, in a future CIP based upon that study to recommend either non-capital and/or capital solutions. Next slide. Walter Johnson Cluster, a capital project, the reopening of Woodward High School. Again, it's 2023 and 2025. 2023 will be for two years for Northwood High School, and then opening in 2025 as a new high school. There is a FY 2023 appropriation recommended, again, for construction cost increases and construction funds. Again, the elementary school for Bethesda-Cherry Chase-Walter Johnson Cluster, there is a TBD completion date. There are funds included to start planning in 2025. Again, for the non-capital, Northwood High School to relocate to the Woodward site for two years, and then Woodward to reopen as a high school once Northwood leaves in 2025. Next slide, please. The McGruder Cluster. So we have one capital project for the McGruder High School Major Capital Project that is scheduled to be completed August 2027, and planning funds will be requested in a future CIP. They have planning funds and construction funds in the out-years, so we're not up to requesting planning funds to begin that project yet. The non-capital, as I just talked about, the Watkins Mill Capacity Study to evaluate the elementary schools within the Watkins Mill Cluster, the Gaithersburg Cluster, and the McGruder Cluster as well. Next slide, please. Richard Montgomery Cluster. There are two capital projects. One is Crown High School, again, with a completion date of 2026. There is an FY '23 appropriation recommended for construction cost increases and construction funds. Twenbrook Elementary School has been one, one of the 13 identified, again, for a major capital project. We will be doing a feasibility study to determine the programmatic capacity and building system needs with a TBD completion date. Next slide, please. The Northeast Consortium. Again, I, I separated these into high school, middle school, and elementary schools. So the first one is high school. James Hubert Blake and Pine Branch both did have previous recommendations for a proposed addition, so doing a feasibility study to look at an addition. Both of those did have, they met the threshold. They were over 200 seats in a previous CIP. However, you can see that they have fallen below. Blake has fallen to 157 seats overutilized, and Pine Branch is at 166 seats overutilized. So for both of those schools, we will monitor enrollment, and should that enrollment go again above that 200-seat threshold, we will be looking at doing a feasibility study for those schools. At the middle school level, Bannaker Middle School, we're looking, they are, Bannaker Middle School is one that was identified, one of the three middle schools identified for a major capital project in the future. So we will be conducting that feasibility study with a TBD completion date. White Oak Middle School is the same. It was the second of the three identified, and we will be doing the same thing. We will be doing a feasibility study to look at the programmatic capacity and building system needs with a TBD completion date. Next slide. At the elementary school level, Burt Mills has a major capital project to be completed August of 2023. There is a 2023 appropriation recommended for construction cost increases and balance of construction funds. Burtonsville and Greencastle, we talked about these before, are both recommended additions, both to be completed in August of 2025, and both have FY 2023 appropriations recommended for planning funds. Joanne Leelock Elementary School at Broad Acres. This is for the new grades three through five elementary school. It's an August 2025 completion date, and there is an FY 2023 appropriation recommended for construction cost increases and the balance of funding for that project. William Tyler Page Elementary School Addition Project to be completed in 2023, and there is an FY 2023 appropriation recommended for the balance of funding for that project. Stonegate has a major capital project to be completed in August 2023, and there is an FY '23 appropriation recommended for construction cost increases and balance of funding for that project. Next slide. Northwest Cluster. It is, there are two capital projects. One again is Crown High School. Northwest is one of the high schools identified to be relieved by Crown High School. This is with a completion date of 2026. There is a 2023 appropriation recommended for construction cost increases and construction funds. And the other one, the second one is Dr. Ronald McNair Elementary School Addition Project to be completed in August 2023, and there is a recommendation for 2023 appropriation for the balance of construction funds. Next slide, please. Poolsville Cluster. The one capital project in the cluster is for Poolsville High School for their major capital project. There is a, here, we show August '24 and August '25. We are looking at now if, sort of a phased construction project for that school. So some of it will be completed and ready in August of '24, and then the, the, the remaining construction will continue to be completed in August of 2025. An FY '23 appropriation is recommended for construction cost increases and the balance of construction funds. Next slide, please. Quince Orchard Cluster. Again, we have Crown. Quince Orchard High School is one of, again, had, have, one high school that has been identified to be relieved with the new Crown High School, to be completed in August of 2026, with an FY '23 appropriation requested, being recommended. The non-capital for Quince Orchard Cluster is Rachel Carson, and I wanted to discuss this a little. There was a capital project for Dufif Elementary School that was previously approved to address their aging infrastructure and also to expand the school to address the overutilization at Rachel Carson. On September 9th of this year, 2021, the Board of Education approved a transfer of those funds, so transfer of the funds for the Dufif Elementary School project to six capital projects in the approved CIP that are scheduled to bid this fall. Removing and reallocating those expenditures allowed MCPS to begin construction for those six projects and provide a budget-neutral funding solution for those six projects. Enrollment at Rachel Carson Elementary School since the '17 school year has decreased, and while the, the school will continue to be overutilized, that decrease reduced the overutilization at the school to a more manageable level. We will continue to monitor the enrollment at Rachel Carson Elementary School and consider a future either capital or non-capital solution should that enrollment continue to grow. Next slide, please. Rockville Cluster. Flower Valley Elementary School. This, this CIP shows that they will exceed capacity by 92 seats, but they're also stable across the six years. So we will monitor their enrollment and consider a project in a future CIP. Next slide, please. Seneca Valley Cluster. So there are two capital projects. The Nielsville Middle School Major Capital Project, which is scheduled to be completed August of 2024. There is a 2023 appropriation recommended for construction cost increases and the balance of funding for that project. And again, Clarksburg Number Nine, an August 2023 appropriation, August 2023 completion, and there is an FY 2023 appropriation for construction cost increases. And again, the recommendation to create the new service area for Clarksburg Number Nine with those four schools to be conducted spring 2022 with Board of Education action November 2022. Next slide, please. Sherwood Cluster. There are two major capital project recommendations. These are for feasibility studies for both Belmont and Sherwood Elementary Schools. Again, identifying the scope of the project, looking at their programmatic capacity and building system needs. There are TBD completion dates, because there is no funding, just feasibility studies are recommended. Next slide, please. Watkins Mill Cluster. There are three projects. Nielsville Middle School, again, with their completion date of 2024. An FY '23 appropriation is recommended for those construction cost increases and balance of funding. Southlake's Major Capital Project to be completed August of 2023. There is an FY '23 appropriation recommended for construction cost increases. And Wetstone Elementary School is one of those 13 schools identified for a major capital project in the future. Again, we will be doing a feasibility study to look at their programmatic capacity and building system needs with a TBD completion date. And the non-capital, again, is the Watkins Mill Cluster Capacity Study, and looking at that, either a non-capital or capital solution in the future to be considered, along with the two other clusters, Cluster Elementary Schools, Gaithersburg and McGruder. Next slide, please. For Waltman High School, there are no capital or non-capital recommendations. Waltman High School, their addition was just completed and opened this past September. Next slide, please. Thomas S. Wooton Cluster. There are four capital projects. Again, Crown High School to be completed in 2026 with an FY '23 appropriation. Thomas H. Wooton High School Major Capital Project. It is scheduled to be completed in 2027. There is a 2023 appropriation recommended to accelerate the design and site funds to address some ADA and site-related issues, but the completion date for the school remains August 2027. Cold Spring Elementary School Major Capital Project. Again, one that has been identified to do a feasibility study to look at the programmatic and capacity and building system needs with a TBD completion date, as well as Dufif Elementary School Major Capital Project, identified for a feasibility study to look at, again, the capacity programmatic and building system needs with a TBD completion date. I do want to make note of Dufif Elementary School. We did have a project, of course, we just previously discussed, for Dufif Elementary School. That scope was much different than what the scope potentially could be with this major capital project, because we were, we're looking to expand the project, expand the building to accommodate Rachel Carson. And that's why we need to do a feasibility study, again, to look at that school just a little bit differently now. And again, the non-capital, just wanted to bring attention to the transfer that was approved in order to fund those six projects that are being bid this fall. Next slide, please. And that is all the clusters. And that is all the clusters.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Please turn your light on. Ms. Silvestri.
Yes, how can you tell if it's a teardown project versus, I don't know what the term is, refresh? For example...
Or renovation or a phased construction. So that will be part of the scope of the project. Back when we used to do modernizations and revitalizations expansions, more times than not, they were tear downs and replacements. Not always, but more times than not. And when we transitioned to the major capital projects, we said that we were taking a step back and we really were going to look at these projects individually. So if the building, if there's no, for example, capacity need, and so we're looking to upgrade the whole building, it may be possible to not tear down the whole building, but to go through the building and literally renovate the entire building as if new. But that will be on an individual basis. We've talked about elementary schools a lot, that they were tear down and replacements, and that was mainly because if we were expanding the capacity, almost doubling the size of many of our elementary schools, if they were one-story, it would be impossible to then make them second stories, that structure couldn't hold a second story. And then the only way to keep the existing would then be sprawl the building, and that's something that we didn't want to do with the land being so valuable and having all of the amenities that we want. And so a lot of those elementary schools became tear down and replacements for that reason. So it really will be an individual look.
So just because it says major capital project doesn't mean it's going to be a...
Absolutely, absolutely. And Poolsville High School is an example of that, where we are going to renovate some of that building, but there are cases, again, where we would have to tear down and replace it for a variety of reasons. So those scopes, doing those scopes and those feasibility studies are very important to figuring that out.
Ms. Harris.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, looking right at Mr. Adams. So some of the questions I'm hearing, and I know there have been ongoing engagement with, on both the Woodward and the Northwood project, so maybe just one opportunity for maybe a wider audience to understand more. Could you first talk about this, what exactly will be completed at Woodward by the beginning of the '23-'24 school year, when Northwood moves in for its two years at that holding school? So what will that site be for the Northwood students for those two years?
Sure, and great question, and I know there have been some recent questions and conversations around the Northwood transition, but ultimately, we'll have brand-new academic space for them to move into as a holding facility. One of the challenges is, we have worked pretty closely with the administration over the past two years to get to this point. I know there have been a few changes at the school, so we're going to go back out, reengage, and just walk through the whole process with both staff and community members again. But essentially, what they will be going to is a brand-new space. You know, they will have a main gym, but no second gym, as we've talked about, is the second phase for Woodward. And we've really spent a lot of time making sure we create the spaces, particularly around their dance program and a few of the other performing spaces, to accommodate those programs at their stay at Woodward. So we do want to go back out, I think we're scheduled to go back out on November 16th to start meeting again with the team and parents, students as well, and just talk through, again, some of the, what to expect when they're there. I would say a couple of things that are still, we're still working through, is this idea of where do we have athletics? Is it near the Woodward site? Is it near the Northwood site? And one thing I would say is that we designed Northwood so that their stadium could be used while they are at the holding center of Woodward. That was a direct request of parents, and we have designed the building to accommodate that. But we know that that may not always work out in the best interest of families and students and visitors, so we will continue to work with Dr. Sullivan and Athletics to continue to work with families to figure out what the best options are. Do we practice and play closer to the holding facility, or do we go back to the Northwood area and hold our sporting events? So those are the logistics we'll continue to work through, but we are scheduled to go back out on November 16th to, again, start those conversations again.
And so the Woodward site, while it is a holding school for Northwood, what, will there be any amenities on the site, and will there be any active work happening on the site during the '23-'24, '24-'25 school years?
So yes, well, assuming the approval of Phase II funding, both the Board and County Council, that the plan is to continue to build out, you know, the arts component, which is the auditorium, second gym component of Phase II, plus the field park. So we will, most of the work obviously would be outdoors in the back of the site where the new fields will ultimately be. But we're also working with parks, there's a park right next door, so we're working with parks to figure out, again, so can we utilize those fields for part of our athletics? We are carving out space for PE and those sorts of things, but when we think about athletics, you know, can we use that neighboring park for those? But yes, construction, there will be some construction happening during their stay, but it will predominantly be isolated to the rear of the site, and then obviously, what we ultimately decide as a board at the preliminary plans for Phase II of the performing spaces in that building.
And so when they move back to Northwood for the '25-'26 school year, that will be done? There will be, the entire site will be finished?
So the goal was to have the building finished. We still want to go back and renovate and rehab the outdoor area. So again, we're keeping their field and spaces online during the construction period. So we may have another year to go back and just rehab and add some of those outdoor spaces at the rear of the site where we're preserving that field. But again, we're, that's the initial plan, but as we reengage with families, you know, that certainly could possibly change. But, you know, right now, the goal is to have all building pieces done, and then if there are lingering construction activities, it would just be for a site type of functions.
And just, so we're looking at both of these schools, Woodward and Northwood, opening up for regular operations at '25-'26 school year. So once the end of the '24-'25 school year happens, Northwood is out of the Woodward site. What is that work that has to happen between the end of, I mean, that's not a lot of time, between the end of the school year and the opening of the '25-'26 school year? So what, is that just ongoing work that will continue to be completed? And then will the site be open and ready to go at Woodward for '25-'26?
Yeah, so the goal is to have both schools functionally open. You know, again, there may be small construction activities happening, but again, they will not impact, you know, the opening or the programmatic functions. We're being very strategic in terms of how we think about Woodward, in terms of furnishings and even, you know, some of the details of Northwood's stay there, so that it can, you know, ultimately go very smoothly into the transition of a brand-new reopening of a school, too. So there's a lot of thought in that, you know, again, you're right, there's just a couple month window there to transition from Northwood out of Woodward and then have it prepared for a reopening of ultimately new Woodward in 2025.
Okay. And moving on to the NEC Projects, Burtonsville, Greencastle, we talked about this the other day, looking at if those stay online, completion dates in August of '25 with planning funds and FY 23, but there are ongoing conversations about maybe a new elementary school in that area, so we'll just be looking at this again when it comes closer to FY 23 to see where the energy is?
Sure, and obviously, that's not part of this recommendation to ultimately create a new school, but, you know, one of the ongoing county conversations is how do we use county property, including Board of Ed property, more strategically in the future? And that Burtonsville area is one of those areas that has been identified, that, you know, it doesn't make more sense to have a school in a certain location and, you know, other amenities in maybe the location of current Burtonsville, but that's very preliminary and just certainly, you know, part of those ongoing best use of land conversations in the county. But for this recommendation, we are looking, obviously, at the addition project.
And just last question, I'm hearing more from some people in Poolsville who are confused about the phased planning for Poolsville, so could you just quickly, for people that might still be wondering, confused, what that phased will look like with the, what will happen first and then what will happen second?
Sure, so the phasing of Poolsville, it really was done, not necessarily to phase work, but to phase it from understanding that there are cost increases, inflation, you know, and other factors that come into it. So one of the ideas is that we took a step back, resequenced the work so that we could focus on the academic space first, and, you know, complete that space, move kids from, you know, the older portions of Poolsville into their new academic space, and ultimately come back, demolish those older classrooms, and then start to rebuild and renovate, as Adrian mentioned. So it is just a strategy in terms of, you know, doing the work in possible phases, and we're going to bid it as a first phase, second phase, in case that there are inflation numbers that exceed our budget. If we do it this way, we can continue the work, we can continue to get the academic work completed, and if the costs are higher than what we have, we have, you know, a year or two to, you know, work with the county to find those additional funds needed to continue it. But, you know, this is just a strategy to keep the project on its current schedule and make sure that we were able to get kids in those 21st-century spaces as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Am I seeing any other questions? Ms. O'Looney.
Yes, so this is a question that's relevant to all of our upcoming projects, specifically for Clarksburg Elementary School Number Nine. I see that there's four elementary schools listed here for the scope of the boundary analysis, and they're all within the Clarksburg Cluster. Is there any consideration being given to expanding the scope beyond just Clarksburg, seeing as the boundary analysis we just did says that to really address, you know, the utilization issues, demographic issues, we need to be expanding the scope of all of our studies of boundaries beyond just isolated clusters?
So just to clarify, one of those schools, Gibbs, is actually in the Seneca Valley Cluster. That changed when we did the Seneca Valley, Northwest, and Clarksburg boundary study. So it actually does incorporate two clusters, it's one from Seneca Valley and three from the other. We did look at, again, when trying to populate, you know, a new school, Clarksburg Elementary School is significantly over, so the majority of kids will probably come from that school. Again, looking at, when we look at geography, you know, looking at the cluster where it's located to the other schools, Gibbs is the southerness part of that, of those four schools, and then you have, and then you have the northerness part, which is Wims or Little Bennett, it's further. And so we did take all of that into consideration when doing, when talking to Dr. McKnight and making suggestions and looking at who, what schools should be included in the boundary. It was about geography, it was about looking at those utilizations, it is also including a school that is in another cluster, which is Gibbs.
And one thing I would add, though, is that I think there was some conversation at the first board meeting about possibly schools like Monocacy and thinking about, you know, can you broaden this particular elementary school study to multiple clusters? You know, one of the ideas or possible opportunities and even concerns is that you ultimately can do that because we are planning for a large Damascus to be able to accommodate Clarksburg, and obviously, we're going through the Poolsville project right now, and we have master plans to increase that, should we start to change service areas that would add capacity in some of these high schools. So we certainly, I think it's certainly an opportunity, but we also want to be conscious of the timing of it, and we wouldn't want to necessarily put kids in a cluster ahead of when we have some of these major capital projects completed, too. So it's just, I think it's certainly an opportunity to talk through it, but it's just something to keep in mind in terms of ultimately where they would go and matriculate through middle and high school as well.
Right, I think it is a little bit more difficult because of the geography of Clarksburg, but maybe for projects in the Down County Consortium and other areas, certainly something to keep in mind is expanding the scope. Thank you.
Okay, thank, oh, Ms. Mandrowski.
Yep, my question was basically very similar to that one, but as you just mentioned, the middle schools, I know that I brought it up before, but I'm curious, can you just explain to me again why we wouldn't have looked at the middle schools and whether or not that's something we should be considering putting in, and if so, when would that happen?
So we did, again, when we were reviewing the CIP with Dr. McKnight, we talked about, actually, a number of different ways to consider doing this boundary study. I think with the completion of Clarksburg, Northwest, and Seneca, where we just moved, reassigned students at the middle school level, at the high school level, these schools are split-articulated schools already, and so moving, reassigning students would have them going to one or the other, but both are, it's only that option, and they already go to those schools. Gibbs is a split-articulated school, Clarksburg is already a split-articulated school. One of the other ones actually split articulates to Halle Wells, not Rocky Hill. And so if, to include the middle schools, you would have to then include all of the middle schools in both of the clusters. And so since this is an elementary school boundary study, and not that we haven't done that in the past, so Gaithersburg is an example, where we did look at the middle schools to look at the articulations, just coming off of the Northwest, Seneca, and Clarksburg, and we did look at that articulation, this was more of a straightforward creating the service area just for the elementary school.
Okay, so just for my own clarification, when Damascus is finished, at that point, we will relook at the bigger picture for the Up County area?
Correct, and I know that there was even discussion, I believe, last year about looking at Poolsville, Clarksburg, and Damascus.
Right.
Certainly, that's something that can be done, again, almost looking at from a much broader perspective. If this all goes through with Damascus, you are looking at doing a boundary study, you can, again, open it up to middle schools, you could open it up to elementary schools as well, you can open it up to those three clusters. It does become a much broader, when you're looking at a high school, it does become a much broader look at a boundary than a much more defined elementary school move, reassigned.
All right, thank you. Wait, actually, sorry, one more quick question. I know that Clarksburg Elementary School is going to be done in a year, year and a half, I guess, right? The completion of 20...
2023.
2023. This will be 2022, okay. So do we have any intentions of doing anything over there at Clarksburg in the meantime to help support, you know, I'm hearing sewage concerns and things like that? What are we doing there to help with that?
And I believe we have a, either follow-up meeting tonight or tomorrow night with some of the Clarksburg parents to talk through just exactly that as a follow-up, but we did add additional portables, you know, this fall, and we are looking to, are actually working with the company to put a restroom unit out there for, to serve those portables. So just working through some of the final logistics, but it would be our goal to have that online for the first of the calendar year, January 1st. So we're making very good progress on that front and looking forward to updating the parents, I believe it's either this evening or tomorrow.
It's tonight.
It's tonight.
All right, I think we can move on. Dr. McKnight?
Do you think you can?
Yes.
Okay, so, next slide, please. So this is the Enorm Superintendent's Recommendation for Gaithersburg Cluster Elementary School Number Eight Boundary Study. Next slide. I don't know if you want me to go through these again, or if there are any questions, we can, we can just directly go to questions. I can go through these slides, so, no?
Sure, we can.
Do I do a quick version?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Carmine House, let's just do a quick version, much of this is the information that was shared the other day, but just as a quick refresher, so that if you have any thoughts, ideas, you can just react to it, but it's all repetitive.
Absolutely. So it was all the elementary... So it was all the elementary schools in the boundary study. We did conduct it, we had to sort of pause and do it virtually, starting in March of 2020. We did release the report in 2021, and we actually presented the report to the board in March of '21. Next slide. So this is the area of the two. On the left is the elementary schools, on the right is the middle schools. I'll just quickly, just for location, Latinsville is at the top in purple, the gold is Goshen underneath it, Strawberry Knoll underneath that in the pink, the teal is Gaithersburg, the yellow to the left is Summers, is Summit Hall, Rosemont is in the red, and to the right is Washington Grove in the green. And on the right side is the service areas, the, the red, the middle school service areas, the red is Gaithersburg and the green is Forest Oak. Next slide. So again, why we were doing this, we were doing this because of the overutilization at the elementary schools in the cluster. You can see Gaithersburg, Rosemont, Strawberry Knoll, and Summit Hall were all overutilized, and that's an elementary school's worth of overutilization. Next slide. At the middle schools, we really were looking about articulation, not their overutilization, but these are their enrollment projections, and you can see they were a little bit over, Forest Oak a little bit over, Gaithersburg a little bit under. Next slide. And again, the demographics, you can see the race/ethnic composition. We have the race/ethnic composition as well as the farms and the ESAL for all the elementary schools. That was current for the 1920 school year when we were doing the boundary study. Next slide. Again, when we do option development, we always follow the four factors. We try to advance those four factors in all of the options that we developed. For this boundary study, it was a total of seven options that we looked at, and those four factors, again, are characteristics of student population, geography, stability of school assignment over time, and utilization. Next slide. So in the option development, and we did talk about this at length, I believe, on Monday, and even a little bit on Tuesday, we always divide each service area into zones in order to come up with options. That allows us to come up with options, almost like a jigsaw puzzle, figuring it out. All schools were not considered in every option. We did talk about Goshen and Latinsville, that they actually were not included in the options for reasons noted above. They do have the lowest farms percentages compared to the other schools in the cluster. However, there is no public transportation to Latinsville, and there's no direct public transportation to Goshen. The, the lower part, when looking at the farms percentages, there are impacts, these schools, these communities are impacted. Some families may not have the ability to have their own vehicles and use public transportation, utilize public transportation. And if students were reassigned from that lower portion to the higher, to the, to Latinsville or to Goshen, it would be impactful to try to get to their students, participate in school activities if relying on public transportation. In addition, both of those schools, Latinsville and Goshen, are not overutilized, so you'd be moving students out, then backfilling with students, and that is where you would have that impact to families moving further north and being able to participate in that school community. Next slide, please. So review of the options, there were some areas, and Gaithersburg Elementary School is an example of that, where they could walk both to the current Gaithersburg Elementary School and also Gaithersburg Number Eight, so that's something that we considered. The number of students in Strawberry Knoll and Summit Hall are similar to the capacity of the schools, so moving out much of the, you know, zones, these were large zones that we had to work with, and sometimes that was challenging in trying to come up with options. And we did talk about, in the cluster by cluster, that we do have the Watkins Mill Capacity Study for future consideration, once this boundary study is done, once we see where the kids that were reassigned and what those projections are, what can we do in the future to address overutilization in the Watkins Mill, Gaithersburg, the northern part of the Gaithersburg Cluster, and then the Magruder Cluster as well. Next slide, please. So to formulate the recommendation, the interim superintendent did review all the seven options, reviewed the stakeholder input, reviewed the district-wide boundary analysis, and after all of that review, did ask us to look at some variations on some of the options, and after all of that, the superintendent did recommend option four, a variation of option four, which believing that it most advanced those four policy factors. Next slide. So this is the recommendation, and the picture is, is better to look at, but I'll just go through. You can see the zones that are reassigned to the new elementary school, the zones from Strawberry Knoll that are reassigned to Gaithersburg Elementary School, the zones from Summit Hall that are reassigned to Rosemont, and just noting that all of those zones now leave Summit Hall as a complete walk school, walking elementary school, from reassigning all of those zones from Summit Hall to Rosemont. You could see the, the zones that are reassigned from Rosemont to Washington Grove. And again, when it came to the middle school, the recommendation reassigns Gaithersburg Number Eight in its entirety, the whole service area, to Forest Oak, and then reassigns Washington Grove from Forest Oak to Gaithersburg Middle School. Next slide, please. So you can see it more in the picture format. You can see the zones are all contiguous, with the exception of Rosemont Elementary School, which was non-contiguous before and does continue to be non-contiguous. You can see the current farms, ESAL of all of the schools, and based on the recommendation, the changes in those percentages. The disparity in the farms percentage is reduced from current to the recommendation. And you can see the utilization, you can see it is, they are all within the 90 or so rate, with the exception of Strawberry Knoll, and we did talk about that, again, that future or next phase, future consideration with the Watkins Mill Capacity Study. You can see where Strawberry Knoll is sort of above the, the center of the cluster, and Watkins Mill is to the left, and Magruder is right to the right. Next slide, please. Again, with the middle schools, with moving the new elementary school or having the new elementary school go to Forest Oak and reassigning Washington Grove to Gaithersburg Middle School, again, the disparity of the farms are actually reduced from what the current farms percentages are. The utilization rates, you can see, are about 84% and 104%, and they were non-contiguous zones before, and they will continue to be non-contiguous zones. Next slide. I know you can't see this, we talked about this the last time, but I just want to point it out that it is in the superintendent's recommendation, it is online as well, so if people want to look and see the details and look at the comparisons and the enrollment projections across the board, they can do so by looking at that, those two effects tables. Next slide. Implementation, and if there are any questions, we can go through this in more detail. Again, for, for the most part, it is a typical implementation, pre-K through four goes first, the first year, and then it's full implementation, pre-K to five. It is for all of those zones. It is, the exception is those, the one Rosemont zone and the one Washington Grove zone. So if we can go to the next slide, we can just talk about sort of the exception. Because of the two-way language immersion and to allow those students who are currently at Washington Grove, who have started to participate in that two-way immersion program, the recommendation is to allow those students to stay, so grades one through five, who will be in grades one through five starting next year, to allow them to remain at the element, at Washington Grove. Pre-K and two would be reassigned if they're in that W2 zone, and they would be reassigned to the new elementary school. The reverse is almost for Rosemont. Again, we talked about this a little bit. If the students do not have the foundation, the students that are being reassigned to Washington Grove, if they do not have the foundation to be successful in the two-way immersion program, then they will have the opportunity to remain at Rosemont and finish out their elementary school year at Rosemont Elementary School. Next slide. And then for the middle school, it's almost the same thing, the, the typical implementation, grade six and seven, and then the following year would be six through eight. For those students at zones R2, R4, and R9, which are the Rosemont zones, if they don't have the foundation, if they remain at Rosemont, just for those students and those students only, they would have an opportunity, when they are articulating to middle school, to either attend Forest Oak Middle School, which would be their service area elementary school, or articulate to Gaithersburg Middle School, or, I'm sorry, it's the other way around. It's, Forest Oak would be their school service area, so going with their school cohort to middle school, or going with their service area cohort to Gaithersburg Middle School. It's a little, but that is just for those students and those students only, and of course, they all go to Gaithersburg High School. And actually, just as a side note, I did speak to the, to some colleagues in, in the ESAL office regarding the two-way immersion and the partner schools that are chosen, and I did say last time it was Rosemont, and there was another, and I couldn't remember the other. The other is actually Mill Creek Town in the Magruder Cluster, and we did have discussions. They do look at those partner schools every year, and so I told them, once the boundary study is approved, that I would get back to them, because having a partner school that articulates with the same as Washington Grove does make more sense, and so that's something that they will look at once the boundary study is approved. And so if that is the case, and they shift it to a different elementary, partner elementary school, then it would be solely these students at Rosemont that remain, that would be the ones that would have the option. And, and once this boundary study sort of goes full through implementation, then it wouldn't be an issue in the future. Next slide. So the summary of the recommendation, it does maintain the current walk areas for the elementary schools. It provides compact and contiguous boundaries for all the schools, with the exception of Rosemont. It allows students from Washington Grove W2, who previously could not walk to Washington Grove, to now allow them to walk to Gaithersburg Elementary School, the new Gaithersburg Elementary School. However, they were able to walk to Forest Oak, and now they will be bused to Gaithersburg Middle School. So it's a switch of their walking ability. Now they can walk at the elementary school level and be bused at the middle school. Currently, they are bused at the elementary school level and have, are able to walk at the middle school level. So it's really just a switch of their ability to walk and be bused. It allows students from Rosemont, those two zones, to walk to Washington Grove Elementary School. So we did maximize the number of walkers, which allows less busting, impact on the operating budget, and of course, the environment as well. Next slide. And that is it for Supplement A.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Ms. Harris?
Yep, thank you. First thing, I would just note that there's so many moving parts in this one, as opposed to the other one we're going to be looking at in just a minute, so, so much work went into this, and so much study, and it's a very impressive piece. One of the things that strikes me, and if you can look at any, many of the slides that you showed, that puts out the geography of the Gaithersburg Cluster, is how strangely shaped this cluster is, and how, right, and Ms., building on Ms. O'Looney's comments from the other day, so many other cluster elementary schools are located right nearby. QO, you know, QO Cluster, Magruder, Magruder Cluster, Watkins Mill Cluster, and even down in the South Boundary, RM. And I think this just highlights Ms. O'Looney's comments that, and that came out in the, in the WXY Boundary Analysis, expanding our vision beyond cluster boundaries can make so much more sense and give us so many more options as we move forward, and I'm happy to hear that that's something that we are going to be doing more of. Yep, but that was just my one comment.
And I also, the one thing I don't like about it is that it doesn't improve the diversity and break up the poverty as much as we would like, and as you explained, Mr. Adams, and for the thousands watching today, that the adjacent clusters don't have capacity, so you would be basically just swapping kids that, for the most part, get to walk currently, and so that doesn't make sense for, for us either. So I just wanted to reiterate the comment that, the discussion that we've had throughout these meetings and, and for the thousands watching, so. If there's no other questions, then we can move forward with the next item.
Next slide, please. So this is Supplement B, the recommendation for the Bethesda/Somerset/Westbrook Elementary Schools Boundary Study. Next slide. So this is the scope of the boundary study. It was just the three elementary schools, no middle schools, no high schools. The green portion, the service area is Bethesda, the yellow is Somerset, and the blue is Westbrook. Next slide. So the, the projections that we used, and you could see, again, the overutilization, these were the projections from the 2020, 2021 CIP, so last year's CIP. You could see that Bethesda's showing about 181 seats overutilized, Somerset at 31 overutilized, and Westbrook has 265 seats available. That does include, you could see the change in the capacity, so that does include the three classroom shell build-out. They go from 547 to 614. And right below, you can see the demographics, again, from the 2020, 2021 school year. Next slide. Again, in developing options, there were a total of nine. Again, we tried to advance the four, the four factors, characteristics of student population, geography, stability of school assignment over time, and facility utilization. Next slide. So the review of the issues, the service areas of the three schools are adjacent to each other. Somerset Elementary School is the second smallest site in the county, and we do have definite concerns and challenges with putting any relocatables on that site, so having a little bit more flexibility in their capacity is something that was considered during the boundary study process. And again, you could see the overutilization based on the 2026, 2027 school year. Next slide. To formulate the recommendation, the interim superintendent reviewed the nine options, reviewed all stakeholder input, information from the surveys, reviewed it in the context of the district-wide boundary analysis, and after all of that review, the recommendation was Option One, believing that the option most advances the four policy factors. Next slide. Looking at the reassignment, so B3 and B8 are reassigned from Bethesda to Somerset, and zones S2, 3, 4, and 5 are reassigned from Somerset to Westbrook. And again, you can see in that chart, the current and proposed changes in the farms percentage, ESAL, the utilization, you can see Bethesda's at 106%, Somerset at 80, and Westbrook at 90, again, keeping in mind that Somerset and, and their site constraints. All the zones are contiguous, all the service areas are contiguous. Next slide, please. And you can see this one a little bit better, so you can see where we started with Bethesda, based again on the 2020, 2021 numbers, preliminary September 30th, and then through the six years, they were at 133% overutilized. The recommendation brings them down to 100 and, I can't see that number.
Six.
Six percent overutilized, thank you. For Somerset, they were almost at capacity, and it brings them, it gives them about 100 seats available, which is about, equates to either three or four classrooms, again, giving them that flexibility concerned about the site constraints. And then, again, at Westbrook, they were, they had about 300 seats available based upon those new projections, and it brings them down to about 90% utilized, so right there between the 80 and the 100% that we, we'd like to see. Again, you can look at the race/ethnic composition, as well as the farms and ESAL percentages. Again, you can look at the race/ethnic composition, as well as the farms and ESAL percentages. Next slide. So the implementation, this one is a lot easier. It is straightforward implementation. It would be pre-K through 4, would be reassigned in the first year, and then full implementation the following year. As part of the recommended CIP, the completion of the shell build-out will be this August of 2022. So when the boundary study is implemented, the shell build-out will be complete. Next slide. So the summary of the recommendation, it maintains the current walk areas for the elementary schools, provides compact and contiguous boundaries, does not reduce student enrollment to within the Bethesda Elementary School capacity, and we talked about that. It does, though, however, reduce their overutilization significantly. And in the future, there are planning funds for that new elementary school, that BCCWJ Elementary School. There are planning funds in the out-years, I believe in FY '25, if the overutilization continues, and overutilization at, at other elementary schools within those two clusters to justify that new elementary school. Next slide. And a summary of looking at the other options, Options 2, 4, and 5 were not recommended because they did not address the utilization factor for Bethesda, as well as Option 1. Options 3, and 6, and 7 were not recommended, and while they did reduce utilization at Bethesda more than Option 1, Options 3 and 7 kept Westbrook Elementary School almost at capacity, and reassigned the furthest zones from Bethesda to Westbrook. Option 6 left Somerset, this, again, second smallest school site in the county, overutilized. And Options 8 and 9 were not recommended because they didn't address the utilization, geography, and demographic factors, as well as Option 1. Next slide. And that is it.
At this time, I'll entertain questions from the board members, starting. Why don't you put your light on if you have a question, Ms. Silvestri?
Could we go to Slide 59? It's really hard to see because we have half, two slides per page, so it's hard to see. But what are the, what are the controversy, what's the controversy here? Who? Okay, I guess my first question is, big picture, if... This, okay. It, it appears that Somerset lost enrollment during the pandemic, and so the emails that were, are coming in are saying, "You don't need to move us because we've lost enrollment, and so the overcrowding has gone away." And so is, is, was, was there an option that did not move Somerset?
No. So, so there are no options on the table that, that would not move Somerset. There were options that moved less students out of Somerset, and that was because the, the option would move the Bethesda students from Bethesda directly to Westbrook. In this recommendation, it moves students from Bethesda to Somerset, because they are adjacent, so they are closer, and then we move students from Somerset to Westbrook, because again, they, they are closer. So it was a geography consideration. Not all the options had that. Again, options, and we can, I'd have to go through, and actually, I have them, I can look, there were options that moved directly from Bethesda to Westbrook. But if we go to, can we go to actually Slides, because I do want to bring, I want to look at, I think it's the next slide, actually. Yeah. If we can look at the next slide. So remember again, that these are 2020-2021 enrollment projections, so it is in pandemic, because these were the numbers that were part of our CIP in October of 2020. You can see Somerset, while they may have lost from the previous year, they are actually at capacity. So that no-change line under Somerset shows them at two seats available, at 100%. And so while their numbers may have dipped, and, and I think I did say this at the last meeting, Bethesda, actually, their, their enrollment projections went up just a little bit from last year to this year. Their, their actual versus their preliminary, even this school year, went up just a little bit. And it is true, Somerset did go down a little bit, and so did Westbrook. But they, you could see that they are at capacity, and so by not moving, so I, again, we don't have an option for that, but for example, if you did not move any students and left Somerset the way they were, then the only option to relieve Bethesda would be to move them directly from Bethesda down to Westbrook. And can you go back to the map one slide before? So again, you would be moving zones from Bethesda down to Westbrook. And again, there were options that did that, but from a geo, geographic perspective, and utilization, because we were looking to relieve Somerset, because we are concerned about them growing, and then what will that do in the future for us, not being able to put relocatables there, or certainly making it extremely challenging. So that is why this recommendation, it is, it did look at the factors, again, thinking that, that this option didn't, did advance all of the factors as a whole better, from a geographic perspective, from a utilization perspective, and from a demographic perspective.
And I would just add, I think some of the challenges with this particular boundary are, they're, they're not, usually when you see the zones developed, you know, you can really start to see some major roadways that define, that really could visually define, you know, what the difference between the zones are. These are definitely older neighborhoods, much narrower streets, very, much more difficult to, to break this, these up into zones that are much more definable. So, you know, for example, you know, one of the zones is, is, you know, divided by a, a street that is very narrow, and one would say that, that is still very much our community, why would that be a, a zone marker within this, this boundary analysis? And, and as Adrian said, you know, we, we have to develop, we have to, to be able to create zones in boundary studies, and, in order to look at a variety of different options. And I think that is what, you know, you're, you're hearing from some of the concerns, is that, you know, we, we are one neighborhood, why would we go to different schools? Because the, the streets and the, and the zone dividers are very small, and they're not as defined as what you would see in maybe newer development-type of communities.
Okay, so the controversy is just, you're splitting up my neighborhood, I don't want to go to Somerset when Bethesda's closer, or?
And it, and it would have been harder, when we looked at these zones, if you, if you look at them, especially in the Bethesda area, they are bigger zones that we used. And the reason why, as Seth said, they're, they are older neighborhoods, they have smaller streets, and to try to find one, some of these zones, and, and I actually did a map of them, you can see some of the streets go this way, and then some of the streets go this way. So that one road that divided the streets that went this way and this way seemed like a natural divide. They are neighborhoods, but again, in order to reassign students, you have to make that division somewhere. And these are actually pretty large zones, and so some of the, some of the things that we heard during, during the boundary study, and the feedback was, "We'll keep our two zones together." The problem with that is that it was so large, that there was no, there was no way to do that and actually reassign them. And so it, it wasn't easy. It, it was easy in some respects, as compared to like the Gaithersburg, where you didn't have as many schools and as many, but it, it still was a difficult boundary study to figure out how to, how to move students, and you, and, and the goal was to actually move more students out of Bethesda, because it was more overutilized. That's just the, the reality of it.
And then my, the other theme that I'm seeing in the emails is just delay. So because of the pandemic, children getting used to going back to school, bonding with their teachers and their schools, and now they're going to go to a different school. Could you explain the implications of delaying?
So, so, and Seth can talk about, because he certainly knows Bethesda a lot more than I do, but certainly, the growth in Bethesda is going to continue. And so I know that there are challenges with relocatables at that site. I know we have heard issues with their cafeteria, they're starting lunch at 10:00 in the morning, they're having lunch till 3:00 in the afternoon, concerns with instrumental music, you can't use the spaces anymore, their support spaces are getting, I mean, again, more students you have, the more issues you have with core spaces, as well as where to put the students. If it was a 20-acre site where you could add just more relocatables, you would have a, you'd be able to house the students, but you'd still have some core issues with cafeteria. I think that it's both issues with their core spaces, as well as where to put the students as they continue to grow. And I, and I actually had, I, I made note of that with COVID, it actually was a double issue, so that we did see enrollment decline, but we also saw a continuation of residential construction. And Bethesda is seeing that, and I think that's probably one of the reasons why their, their numbers actually didn't come down, because they do have that development, and they acknowledge that they have that development, and the concerns that they have with the overutilization. The site is definitely an issue with regards to relocatables. And Seth?
I would say yes, you know, so the Bethesda Elementary Site is, is a challenge, but I, I think, you know, even when, when talking about a delay, we have to also keep in mind that we are talking about a boundary study at Gaithersburg Cluster that is, that is moving, you know, a, a lot of kids, you know, in order to populate a school. So the rationale to delay because of, of, of that, I think we have to keep in mind that, that we have a large impact in another community as well, that, that may not necessarily result in, in a similar delay. But thinking about, again, Bethesda Elementary, we are hearing about concerns with parking, we're hearing concerns, as, as Adrian talked about, with, with just operational elements. And I would say we are pretty much running out of room, if not out of room for portables. So as capacity grows, you know, portables will have to be placed in the parking lot. You place portables in a parking lot that already does not meet the needs of that school, it's going to just start to compound some of the challenges there. So it is something that we've, we've been paying close attention to, and one that I would be concerned if, if, if we start to think about delaying without some sort of relief at that school.
And I wanted to say also that although we mentioned the future elementary school shared with Walter Johnson, the way our CIP is, the, the challenges that we have in our CIP funding, that could be a long time away. And so if parents are thinking, "Oh, we'll, we'll wait it out here at Bethesda overcrowded because this new elementary's coming," that's, that could be a long time with this overcrowding. So just wanted to put that out there.
Ms. Evans?
Dr. McKnight, can you speak to the social-emotional piece? Because parents have, they have mentioned that, and so we don't want to discount that. But I do know that when we did the boundary changes in the Clarksburg Cluster with Neillsville, like, we did some things at the schools prior to opening. What can we let our parents know that they can expect, so that it can help to put some of their children's mind at ease with this change, that for some would just be a little bit difficult?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that question, Ms. Evans. So we've had an opportunity to experience changes like this and work with schools, and you bring up the example of Neillsville, because I think it's a, it's a very good one. I mean, our children definitely in the system have had to experience change in a lot of different ways over the past year related to this pandemic. But some of the problems that we're trying to solve, and this is a, is one, and the team so eloquently spoke to this, I mean, the overutilization is significant in that area. And we know that it's a difficult thing for children to make a shift into a different school, and, and all of those things that come along with change, and at the same time, we know they're resilient. But given the fact that we know that they're hesitant with that change, a lot of the community meetings that we have, having the students come out, get acquainted with the school, get acquainted with the staff beforehand, it's that, it'll, those practices that I think make a significant difference in things that bring down their tension level, from essentially embracing something that's still unknown to them at that particular time. And all of this just connects with so many other things, because, you know, a great question that we will ask our community is, you know, "What did you like about your school? What are the things that, that exist there that, that keep you connected to that school?" Maybe it's a program, you know, maybe it's extracurricular activities, those types of things. If those are things that are valued to community members, those are always adjustments that we're also able to make, you know, within our schools, to make sure there's familiarity and interest-level programs and activities that are available to students. So, you know, I say to our, our parents, I know that there is much hesitance in making that change, but I do think it's an opportunity for our students to not be overcrowded, you know, to have a different experience. And we're going to do everything within our power, because that's our responsibility, to make them comfortable with that change. And we have time to do it, and we will do it. Because I know our other schools are there, as we've learned, when we've had to do this in the past, ready to be there and embracing them, and making sure that when they come to their new school, it is going to be a place of comfort for them, and acknowledging that transition. So that involves the teachers, the counselors, the administrators, everyone, just welcoming them in. So I appreciate you asking that questions. And of course, as they transition in, we'll pay attention to things that are happening. How are they adjusting to making new friends and meeting new peers and, and getting themselves involved to be a part of that school community that they join?
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other lights, so I want to thank you for the presentation. We had some good questions and some great answers. Thank you. So Dr. McKnight, do we need a few minutes for your people to get in?
I think we are ready.
All right.
Yes, thank you so much for coordinating that, everyone. I know it requires some flexibility, but thank you for coming down. And thank you to the team for the presentation, it was great, and we look forward to continuing to work with our community members. So we'll transition to ESER grant funding, so we will welcome out the additional staff to the table. I do know that we're having, excuse me, some join us virtually and in person for the presentation. So we, this, this ESER grant funding that we're talking about today, let me start by saying, I am so thrilled that we are having this discussion. I know that we've gotten a lot of comment over the past months about, you know, what is the school system's plan to use the ESER money, where is there going to be an opportunity to have some transparency? And I'll say the great thing about this is that we have been engaging many of our community members to be a part of helping us reinvent a lot of the opportunity that we have in our school system as a result of this grant money. So as we discuss and talk through some of this today, I think much of it will provide some clarity. So this afternoon, we will review the board, we will review with the board the funding that Montgomery County Public Schools has been awarded, from the federal government grants for our school district's response to COVID-19 pandemic. This was once-in-a-century pandemic, and I must say that it requires substantial funding and commitment from the federal government to come in and quite frankly, provide relief in a lot of different ways. Over our past board meetings, we've been talking about the relief, whether it may be relief of making sure we're having PPE items, relief of all the things that we need to do to set up structurally programs so that we could have access to our students, relief so that our students had everything in their, that they needed to be able to continue the continuity of learning as we've experienced the pandemic. And so the federal government responded to this by being able to provide us that substantial funding. At the same time, COVID-19 has impacted our teaching and learning in ways that we could not have foreseen, when the president first declared this as a state of emergency, or a national emergency. That's why our conversations around how are we looking at the students in Montgomery County Public Schools and how they've been impacted by the pandemic continues to be important. And then the funding comes into that discussion, because of course, then we have to say, where do we want to place our dollars, and how are we using our dollars to address all these areas of need that we have discovered are significant areas of need and will continue to discover over time? Today, you're going to hear about the 387.2 million that MCPS has been awarded from the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, commonly referred to as ESER. You're going to hear about our plans for the use of this funding, and how we're going to evaluate the impact of this funding, and what that impact will have on our students, and most importantly, their learning. We will also present- We will also present how our plans for ESER funding align with the board's new strategic priorities. We think it's important for us to think about how we're utilizing this funding and how this funding will help us address the goals within our strategic plan. And as a result, the plans for ESER funding reflect the input that we've received from stakeholders as well in the strategic plan implementation process. After a grant is awarded, a school district is permitted to modify its plans for the use of this funding through an amendment process allowing us flexibility to redirect the use of funds. So I just want to emphasize that because that is really important as we talk about ESER funding. When we consider it, I'd say we have two opportunities there. ESER funding provides us an opportunity for relief of all of the impact of COVID-19, but also innovation. Now, as we innovate the school system and look at different opportunities to build, rebuild differently and address needs in very creative ways that we haven't been able to do prior to the pandemic in the system, we also have to be flexible. There are going to be things that we try and learn that will be different, but that's why the data monitoring becomes really important because then we have to look at data and determine, are these things that we're investing in, whether they be new processes or new systems, worth our investment? And so constantly coming back to look at the impact is important as we think about the ESER funding. That also requires that we have to be flexible when we go back and say, okay, if we're realizing that an investment is not worth our money or we're not seeing the significant impact we want to see for our children, then let's not continue that. So that's the part that I raised because as we go through this process of utilizing our ESER funding through 23, it does say that, you know, we have the opportunity to resubmit and make changes in this plan if we find that that's necessary. And so I think it's important to say that, and that's why us looking at how we use this funding and monitoring the data that goes along with whether these investments are making a difference in the way that we value is occurring or not. And if it's not, then we have the flexibility to be able to make those changes and submit that to the state and follow through on that process. So again, I'm excited that we've had so many stakeholders involved in the formerly known as 2.5-year plan, today known as the DESIP plan, because that is a space that we value that does allow lots of time, space, and energy for many who are invested in the school system to be a part of how do we reimagine MCPS now moving forward. So with that, I want to say thank you, and at this point, I want to thank the team for all the work that you have done, Mr. Riley, Ms. Sharon, and Ms. Dawson. And at this time, I will turn it over to you, Ms. Dawson, the Chief of Finance and Operations, to begin the presentation.
Thank you so much. And we are so excited to be here today so that we can present on this Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Act. So thank you, Dr. McKnight, and board members, and Ms. Wolf. It's our pleasure to talk with you this afternoon. And in addition, our goal today is really to demonstrate how the use of the ESER funds align with the strategic plan in the five areas of the District Strategic Initiatives Implementation Plan. We'll also show how these funds have been spent to date and plan for future spending. Finally, we'll address the anticipated results in each of the areas and how we're going to measure impact. Next slide, please. Let's talk about the historical perspective and how this fits in to the funding. The ESER funds that have been awarded to MCPS were a result of three acts of Congress and for the purpose of providing LEAs with emergency relief funds to safely reopen and sustain the safe operation of schools and to address the impact of COVID-19 on our students. The CARES Act, also known as ESER I, provided MCPS with $24.8 million. However, $2 million of those dollars were set aside for equitable services. This was a requirement to share funding with non-public schools, but in this case, MCPS was required to do the ordering of the materials and provide that. The Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations, or CRRSA, Act provided for MCPS to receive ESER II funding of $111.2 million. And the American Rescue Plan Act, signed into law on March 11, 2021, provided funding totals of 387, I'm sorry, provided the ESER III funding totals of $252 million. Altogether, the ESER funding, federal funds, totals $387.2 million in combination, which represents approximately 14% of the MCPS operating budget. Prior to this year, federal funding represented 2% to 3% of operating funds. Although the grant period for some of these new federal funds extends through FY '25 from a budget perspective, it's still considered one-time funding. And as such, it's not listed as recurring funds. Operating funds, and there is a commitment on gathering stakeholder input on the use of these funds, and there will be strict monitoring throughout the year on financial status and intended effectiveness. So for transparency, the ESER funds will be part of the annual budget book as informational material and will also be part of the monthly financial analysis and reporting to the Board of Edin County Council, we call financial monitoring. Next slide, please. As these are restricted grant funds, the use of the funds must maintain certain stipulations. And as you see before you, these are the ESER legislation-defined areas for allowable uses. So ESER I originally had 12 allowable uses. ESER II and III uses were expanded to include facilities, related expenses. These would be numbers 11, 12, and 13. The Maryland State Department of Education Grant Applications required MCPS to adhere to the allowable uses in the details of all applications we submitted for ESER I, II, and III. In addition, to specifically allow the uses, the ARPA and MSD also imposed other requirements, such as the requirement to spend not less than 20% of the funding on mitigation of learning disruption through evidence-based interventions. And certain reporting and fiscal assurances, including providing data that demonstrates a maintenance of equity. Maintenance of equity in this case requires that in fiscal years 2022 and '23, to maintain per pupil funding, which is combined state and local, for the top quartile of our high-poverty schools, which was 53 in total. This provision ensures that each LEA safeguards its high-poverty schools to disproportionate cuts to funding and staffing. Next slide, please. In addition to the federal and state mandated use of the ESER funds, it was also important to make sure that the use of these funds were aligned with the five key areas of the District Strategic Initiatives Implementation Plan, including the mitigation of learning disruption, focusing on our most poverty-impacted schools, well-being and support, digital learning and support, and COVID-19 operations. This slide also reflects the alignment of the DESIP areas to the proposed three components of the board's strategic plan that was presented on October 5 at a board meeting. Next slide, please. So again, as we're aligning, MCPS identified eight program functional areas. In taking into account the 14 legislative allowable uses, that's why MCPS identified eight unique program areas that warranted funding from ESER I, II, and III in grant dollars. In the next few slides, we'll begin to provide the budget of allocated dollars to these areas. Then the program areas will be demonstrating the plan or the purpose for these funds, the anticipated results, and the timely timeline and methodology for evaluating impact. Finally, another concept to consider, as Dr. McKnight spoke to, as we implement the process, it's important to remember to be agile in the funding and the financial approach as needs may change during the year based on data with products and services. Maintaining a fluid approach allows for the funding to be intentionally resourced based on data and those high priorities and the impact. Next slide, please. I'm now going to turn it over to Rob Riley, the Associate Superintendent of Finance, so that we can do a line-by-line understanding in the different areas.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Good morning, President Wolf, Dr. McKnight, board members. So this slide that we're looking at right now shows how the ESER funding is divided among the five DESIP components and the eight ESER programs or functional areas just mentioned. As noted, the total of $387.2 million represents about 14% of the MCPS operating budget. And of that 387.2 for ESER I, II, and III, MCPS has spent just under $75 million, which is slightly less than 20%. And this is directly related to the fact that ESER III, we just got the notice of grant award for that, for two-thirds of that on October 22, 2021. So supplemental appropriation for ESER III still has to be approved by the board and county council. Spending plans for ESER III will continue through 9/30/2024. Next slide, please. A total of $27.6 million of ESER II and III support COVID-19 operations. Now, since ESER II grant was submitted, MCPS has been able to address COVID testing from state resources, and as a result, that funding has been realigned to the cost of classroom monitors. This is an example of the flexibility that was mentioned by Dr. McKnight and Dr. Dawson. Due to the changing nature of some of the targeted needs, the grant amendment process does offer the opportunity for this flexibility for realignment, assuming that the new proposed uses do fit all the other requirements, the 14 that was mentioned before. We will use 11 million of ESER III funding for the continued needs for PPE, safety materials, and cleaning supplies. Funding will also be used for installing two water bottle filling stations at each of the 209 schools. Next slide, please. ESER II and III provide a total of $65.6 million for digital learning and support, and this is the funding that supports the stand-up of the Montgomery Virtual Academy as well as the technology requirements for students and staff. Next slide, please. A total of $174.5 million of ESER I, II, and III are allocated to mitigated learning disruption and for our most poverty-impacted schools. ESER III came with the requirement that not less than 20% of the total allocation will be needed to address learning disruption. $85.5 million for mitigating learning loss and most poverty-impacted schools comes from ESER III's 252.1 million. So we've met that 20% requirement. We cannot spend this $85.5 million from ESER III, as mentioned before, until it gets approved at your November 9 meeting. Next slide, please. A total of $119.5 million of ESER I, II, and III funding goes to well-being support. MCPS has been providing meals free of charge to students and youths 18 and under since the start of the pandemic. As a result, the bottom line, bottom line of the balance sheet to food services operations has been severely impacted. We plan to use $20.6 million of ESER III to fund this replenishment of lost revenue for the food service since the beginning of the pandemic. All of the funding and well-being support is being allocated just from ESER III with the exception of professional development and learning. This area had $16 million allocated from ESER II, of which 6.4 has been spent to date, I'm sorry, 5.6 has been spent to date, and another 12.3 was allocated in ESER III. President Wolf, at this time, we are ready for any questions the board may have.
Please turn your light on if you have a question. Ms. Looney?
Yeah, so my first question is about the eight functional areas of the funding. Something that I see is missing that I don't know if we can add, but I'm certainly interested in is after-school care and extracurricular programming, especially for, you know, the second priority area, the second allowable use of this funding is addressing the unique needs of low-income students. I certainly think that that would fit within that category. I don't know if there's a response to that.
Yeah, as one of the things that we talked about prior, even the other day when we came to the table, was something called out-of-school time. So that is definitely an area that we're exploring now, especially with this grant, and really looking at how can we provide students opportunities on days that we're not in school? And then also to expand more opportunities while we're in school, you know, during the week as well. So we are looking and examining that, and we'd like to bring that back with more information too.
Okay, great. It's just something that I did not see in well-being support or anywhere else here. Another question I had, and this keeps coming up, but the water bottle filling stations under COVID-19 operations, I know we were supposed to have two in every school by the time that we opened, did that happen? Because I'm visiting schools and I do not see two, and I'm hearing from students that they don't have two stations at every school, and that compiled with this fact that we don't serve, we don't have single-use water, plastic water bottles in our cafeterias anymore has been a real concern for students.
Okay, so, great question. The water filling stations have been delayed somewhat. We're looking at November, and again, this is a result of, unfortunately, the supply chain, where these materials were expected to come in in October, and we thought that we would begin disseminating at that time. So unfortunately, we're expecting them in November to begin dissemination to each school. However, we do have water bottles, and we have notified schools that if they need, that's part of what the Division of Food and Nutrition Services can provide. If they need water bottles, we can provide that to any school as part of the relief funding. So there's no reason why there shouldn't be water.
So it should be up to the school administration to request that from central?
Yes, yes. And we have notified them. Maybe we just need to re-
Yeah, I think-
Send something out again and let them, because they can do it right through their cafeteria manager.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's a concern I've been hearing a lot from students is not having water, which is concerning.
All right, we'll follow up.
And do you know how long installation takes for the?
In talking with facilities, I thought that Seth, and I believe Seth is on here, I think it takes several weeks to get them through different clusters. So it would not be, I think it would take several, probably November, December, to get all of these in schools. So it will take a bit of time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dawson, I just wanted to add to that point. One of the delays, and maybe, and forgive us if we did not mention it, had been, of course, materials, because when we first started the project, we knew that we would have to order materials, and it was going to be an additional labor part to be able to put this in school. So I just want to say, I know at some point, this whole process of what we're working through with material and receiving materials and labor has been a part of this, but we will definitely keep the board updated because this is a priority, and we know it's important, you know, for students to have water, and then also to be able to take advantage of it as a recycling opportunity to be able to fill at the stations. Thank you.
Dr. McKnight, can I also just add briefly to address Ms. Looney's question around out-of-school time? As Dr. McKnight noted, as did Ms. Dawson and Mr. Riley, that the grants are nimble in the fact that as things come up, we want to shift and change, and we have already decided to be allocating $2 million for out-of-school time. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear for the board.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, thank you. And I noticed too that that's one of the areas, out-of-school time, that the federal legislation requires states to carve out specific allocations for those activities. So looking at the first and third permissible uses, allowable uses of ESER funding, it gets to coordinating with state and local health departments and increasing preparedness and response. We may talk about this as a once-in-a-century pandemic, but I don't think we can count on the next one being 100 years from now. And so I think, are we really looking at some of the capacity we've built up now as something that we are going to maintain going forward instead of just move it aside once we potentially get through the initial phases? I mean, still, I'm looking at Delta Plus, and I, you know, so we're not done yet, you know, we're not out of the pandemic. And I looked, we had, in our transmittal this week, it was talking about looking at testing capacity of other school systems, and I noticed that both Baltimore County- testing capacity of other school systems, and I noticed that both Baltimore County and Prince George's have been able to stand up both PCR and rapid testing for symptomatic students and staff. Are we consulting with them to figure out? I know we, the conversation here in Montgomery County has been a staffing issue with DHHS that prevented full utilization of the state K-12 COVID testing program. Have we reached out to Baltimore County and Prince George's to see how they were able to stand up these programs in their health rooms?
We have reached out to our surrounding districts for information on testing. I don't know to that depth, we can follow up to see more specifically how they've rolled it out specifically. But one of the things that we are working with currently around testing is to increase the capacity of testing to different depots and central office buildings, so that staff would have that ability to test as well. And that's something that will be coming up shortly, that we've been working on and working hand-in-hand with DHHS.
And I think, you know, even if we are able to stand down that capacity in our health rooms now, the ability to ramp that kind of capacity up quickly, even if it's for a different purpose, is something that I think we want to have that planning in our back pocket going forward, because, again, I'm not sure we can count on the next pandemic being 100 years down the road.
Ms. Harris, if I can also jump in, I do want to, sorry.
Who is coming?
I also do just want to note that we are regularly collaborating with other school systems in Maryland, in particular, I personally, with Baltimore County and with Prince George's County. It is important to note, and we've had conversations with the County Executive's Office about this, the structure of our Department of Health and Human Services is very different in Montgomery County than in other counties in the state. And so that's another layer in terms of how we collaborate effectively and make sure that we deliver services effectively. So it's not exactly the same in terms of structures and processes, but yes, we are definitely in regular communication. And there are a lot of things that the other school systems have reached out to us about that we have implemented ahead of other school systems, or in a better place in terms of our quarantine percentages and things like that.
So something we are all learning from each other, so we're ready for the next time.
Absolutely.
Ms. Harris, to address your, you were alluding to, are we ever going to go forward with some of these items in the future? Because this might not be the last pandemic. So we're doing this with all of the items in ESAR's 2, 1, 2, and 3, to see what might be potentially, we might be able to bring into our operating budget. Of course, that's going to be based on evaluation and impact, and that's what you'll hear about later on in the program.
Yeah, yeah, being ready and prepared. And then, one of the things that I'm hearing from students, especially our LGBTQ students and allies, our interest in seeing, I know, some of our mental wellness, social, emotional work, sort of rolling out to shore up some of the anti-bullying initiatives, specific to anti-LGBTQ that they're experiencing, and I think we've all heard about some of those incidents, and some, I'm hearing about more incidents that might not have been as high-profile. And also, looking at some of, how we are perhaps using some of the funding around activities and opportunities that promote inclusivity, especially looking at our LGBTQ-plus students and allies. I know, you know, nationally, the statistics are that about 72% of our LGBTQ students reported poor mental health during the pandemic shutdown, and 81% reported more stressful or difficult living circumstances, combination of isolation, stress, and, you know, disruption of their ability to get outside if they're not in an accepting home. So are we doing some things that are specific to our LGBTQ-plus students and allies, or that are very representative or extending, you know, extending some of that to the concerns that these students are raising?
So we definitely do, and I don't think, I know Greg Edmondson has done a lot of work around this, and is continuing to do a lot of work around focusing on LGBTQ. I don't know if anyone in our virtual audience can speak to that, because we do have our fellow presenters and virtual audience members available.
I can grab some of it, Stephanie. Good morning. So there are a few things that we have in play for our LGBTQ-plus students. There's actually a meeting happening tomorrow where we're talking about our communication strategy around how we're reaching these students and families. We've been closely partnered with members of the MCC PTA, as well as various agencies helping us to lift up some forums. So last year, even during the pandemic, we were able to offer a virtual forum where the students had the opportunity to come out. We plan on doing that again this year. We're looking at the elective courses in the high schools that we've been able to lift up and offer, getting student feedback and voice about that. Also looking at how we can expand that to more schools, and what are some other course offerings. Also, we're working closely with the curriculum department about some of the course content. How are we able to educate not only our students, our community members, but our staff members around the importance of this issue? And then finally, really, how we're bringing our families in. How can we support them through SFSE? Everett and his team working very closely with that work. So we're excited about some of the things that are on the horizon. And there's a lot of, especially with the last incident that happened, we are very, very much in close partnership with our schools, our community members, and our agency partners to make sure that we continue to be very vocal about our support for this and how we expand the work.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, we've even seen, I mean, what's happening in schools, but we've even seen anti-LGBTQ public comment in this space, and at several of our past meetings over the past six months. So along those lines, too, one of the things that happened in the spring, we had $25,000 grant from the Center for Safe Schools, I probably got that wrong, here in Maryland, and it was supposed to be for the development of a safe reporting app, safe reporting, not just for LGBTQ bullying, but other issues, too. And we got a core group of students who were working with Ed and others on the development of that app. Can we get an update? I know there was a prototype ready to go over the summer. Can we get an update on the status of the development of that student-focused app at some point soon?
Ms. Harris, we can absolutely bring that back. That grant was actually one that was shared between the Office of School Safety, as well as the Equity Initiatives Unit. And so they submitted their proposal collectively on that. So I'm so glad you brought that up. It will be great for us to come back and look at that progress in there. And also, you just made me think about the opportunity we have as we look at these different areas of the, how are utilizing the ESAR funding? And this is, I'll highlight the data, because what we need to address in the social-emotional wellness across the system for all students, the data collection of who's being most impacted in ways that we don't want them to be impacted allows us to be able to intentionally target specific groups of students and be very intentional for those who we see that are being impacted in ways in which we are not happy with. And so what, how, what do we do? What do we do for their safe and well-being mentally and physically and socially, emotionally, as well as what is the education of all to make sure they contribute to the environment? So as we map this out, it may very well be that we're starting out from some very broad perspectives, but also narrowing in as we collect more data as our students have come back into the building now, after a period of time, to be very intentional about that. And I just, I value that, and think it's so important to appreciate your questions and comments about us being that specific, because that is exactly how specific we will need to be.
But I, I mean, I was able to sit in a meeting and see the earliest piece of the prototype that the students developed, and it includes that kind of a data collection aspect anonymous, but, and I would just specifically ask when we get that update, and let's give credit where it's due, it was three recent graduates who built that prototype, because when we got, when we were talking about the grant at the Board meeting, MCPS was just in the stages of kind of looking at doing that, and there were students that had already done the work. So they came and all came together. When we get the follow-up on this, could we get a demonstration of the prototype? Or maybe by that point, it will not be a prototype, but we'll be actually ready for use, so that everybody in the audience can see what this app looks like, and we can increase uptake. And it's student-focused, but it will also be used for all, so anybody can report, you know, a parent, a teacher, or a staff member, as well as students.
Ms. Harris, thank you for bringing that up, and I know you were on the committee that was working with the students on the grant. They have graduated from MCPS, so they've moved on to college. We will provide you an update. It's not only the reporting component, but we also wanted to include spaces where there were resources that people would be able to access at any point in time, some videos, not only for students, but also for families as well. So because the students had gone on to college, of course, that kind of created a little stop in terms of the gap that was there, but we'll definitely come back and provide you an update.
Thank you.
Ms. Silvestri?
Yes, thank you. I had a question on Slide 7 about the HVAC infrastructure. How did you decide, given that we have so many HVAC issues, how did you decide that this amount of money was appropriate or the right amount?
So when we- So when we look at individual schools and their needs, these basically were done by facilities management in terms of site assessments around the HVAC. It also includes replacement of filters, air cleaners, so that, all of this was kind of wrapped into that total in terms of the amount of air cleaners we had to provide rooms. That was based on the maintenance of the air systems within each school, and each one was evaluated to determine how many air filters they would need for different rooms, and then the replacement of the filters themselves for the HVAC systems. When we went out to bid for these and did RFPs for those things back, you know, last fall, we were looking at, you know, the most cost-effective prices we could find, and we did that work. But as we see moving forward, you know, we're, at least we're locked into those prices for now, but I could see, we'll have to perhaps revisit this as we move forward, just because of supply chain as, in moving forward.
I guess my question was, could we have put more in to cover more of our HVAC issues?
Yes would be the answer. Yes, we could. We could. We would have to, at this point, we would have to amend the ESAR funding.
But you have to take it away from somewhere else, right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, I understand. In terms of accountability, do, does the feds ask for, what do they ask in terms of accountability?
There's a whole monitoring section within the SR, within ARP. That's a key component, monitoring, as well as communication policies. The dollars are just one piece of it, but they're very strict on the monitoring requirements.
And will we see that, what's being reported in terms of the monitoring?
We could absolutely share that with the Board. So that's, thank you, Rob, for sharing. That's the monitoring of exactly how we're being fiscally responsible, that's required at the federal level for this money, so that, you know, they can hold us accountable to the things that we say. But we also internally are monitoring, you know, how we're using this money, and that's why I spoke earlier about the monitoring component of this internally for us is going to be very significant, because this is something we want to look at often, and measure impact, and, again, make adjustments or amendments as necessary. So we have an internal process as well, in which we work with offices, look at how often they're looking to spend, when are we making these investments, when are we making these investments, based on how often and frequently we have the data available that tells us the impact on these investments? So significant part of this.
Thank you. My final question is about the counselors and the social workers. These are new positions to MCPS? And what's our plan for funding them once the grant money is gone?
Yeah, so I'll start. That's a great question. Yeah, so in terms of getting the additional FTEs, or the funding for counselors and social workers, we did it through this in order to get those positions in place right away. As we move off of these grants, because they're two-year grants, and we know they're one-time funding, that is the question. So if we are going to say that we want to maintain these positions, then we have to incrementally add these into the budget, and that is critical for us to have the data to support. Can we get all of these numbers? Or is that a priority for us to maintain that once the ESAR funding is gone? So that, that's the critical component, to determine if that, based on the data, is something that we will maintain, and we will have to put that into the budget incrementally over the next two years, in order to make that happen.
I imagine that makes recruiting difficult as well, because you're being hired as a grant-funded counselor. So anyway, okay, thank you.
I just have a follow-up to Ms. Silvestri's question. These funds have to be spent by a certain time. Is there going to be an impact from the supply chain being delayed? Because what I had heard is that, while I was watching the news, and they said it could take a year to relieve the supply chain issue.
I think we'll have to stay tuned to what I think the government just learns about how this impacts school systems' overall process of being able to implement this, based on that. We have not gotten any guidance or any specifics, but I think we all can kind of look at it and project that if that's taken into consideration, you know, hopefully, maybe, that gives us an opportunity to have things extended for a while, you know, which would absolutely work in our favor. So, great question, President Wolf, but definitely something we'll monitor. I did want to circle back for just a moment on what Ms. Silvestri raised. When we talked about the financial investments here, and I said this is an opportunity for us to be innovative, to learn, adjust, adapt, and then decide what it is that is important, and what we see impact in our system, and what do we want to continue to invest in, and then, you know, possibly what changes we want to make. It also requires we look at our work differently. I've been having this conversation with the team, but we know even in the labor market, just going through a traditional process of hiring people is very difficult. So you add on a very good point, if you know that you're, you may be hired for a limited amount of time, that's another factor into why there may be hesitation. Some of what we are entertaining and looking at is, how do we actually possibly contract out some services in ways that we have not before, that doesn't require us rely on the traditional system that, in fact, just does not work all the time? And we have to ask that question based on the investment, because there are certain positions that you do want to have as a whole in your school system, as a part of the community. But then there are some things that we have just traditionally done that take us to that traditional right of hiring, that we really have to ask the question, does that make sense today? If it's a particular service, you know, that we're providing? Is it a service that we've added on to a position in a way that originally takes that position away from doing the things that we intended for that position to do? So, I mean, I'm talking from a very wide perspective here about that, but these are all the questions that we're engaging in, asking one another and pushing one another on, because, you know, the labor market being what it is, it does provide the opportunity for us to say, does it make sense for us to do it this way, because this is the way that we've always done it?
Thank you for that comment. I think I've asked before about contracting out for services, so thank you. Ms. Mandrowski?
Yep, thank you. So many things have been said that I kind of like have comments on or whatever. First of all, to Ms. O'Looney's point, I think, I feel like I read somewhere that there was a national shortage of water filling stations or something, so people are having a hard time getting them. I don't know if that's true or not, but can we please get some water bottles to the kids in schools? Because I too tour schools, and the water fountains are all taped up, and you can't use them, and let's just, you know, let's just get the water bottles till we get the filling stations, if possible, please. And then, kind of overall, you're, we're talking about these programs, and I like it, and I appreciate that we're being intentional with our, how we're targeting, where we're putting money. But my overall question in this area is, how are we measuring our return on our investment? And then, will the budget show us where the dollars are being spent on different programs? I mean, I've had conversations with people from Matchbox, the Reading Lab, or Learning Lab, or some, I know that there are programs that have shown us data that say, here's how many kids we've worked with, here's what their grades were before, here's where they are now. To me, those are good return, showings of returns on investments. How are we measuring our return on our investments as we continue on this process?
Absolutely. I'm so glad you asked that question, and this is one of the things that we're most excited- excited about getting back to in MCPS, I got to tell you. The pandemic has taken us all from being emergency management, I guess in a lot of ways, giving everybody what they need, and quite frankly, 18 months of that is exhausting, because it, it, it interferes in a lot of ways with intentionality and accountability for what is, what it is that we're doing. So we have been excited, and I'm going to ask for Sharon to share, because when we developed this plan, we said, what are going to be our strategic markers? What are going to be our performance indicators to tell us that, and how often are we going to look at? So, Ms. Sharon, do you want to share? I'm excited for you to share that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. McKnight. And I will say that as we were putting the ESR presentation together, I mean, Dr. McKnight was extremely clear on the fact that it's not just about the dollars, but how are we measuring the impact of our work to validate whether or not what we're spending is working, and if it's not, what adjustments we need to make, not just to different strategies or different implementation, but also to the dollars that we're spending. You're going to hear in the, in the rest of this presentation, a lot more detail around the measurement of the impact and the anticipated timeline for measurement, as well as what our anticipated results are, right? Because we should not implement anything or provide any strategy and invest in it without saying, what is the anticipated impact we want to see for students and staff? So that is going to be part of the follow-up, the rest of the presentation. But in addition to that, I want to note that this is also the critical work of the DSI project teams. You'll also hear about this a little bit later. But the DSI project teams are in the process and will continue to be in this process of what we kind of consider a Plan Do Study Act process, where we plan for recommendations, we implement things, the DSI will come back and analyze the data on implementation to determine, was it effective, was it not effective? And if it's not effective, what do we do about it? What changes need to be made? And the vision behind the work of the DSI is to be doing this in real time constantly, so that we are not just waiting at the end of a year to say, well, did what we do work or not? But that we're making, doing those measurements along the way. And this is a, this is the way we should be taking a look at all of our work, and then building in how the operating budget and how the ESR grants or any other grants that we're investing in are having an impact on the work that we're doing. So, so you're going to be hearing more about that soon.
So, I appreciate that. You know, over the summer, I wrote myself this note so that I would not forget it, and I carry it around with me in my bag of many things, but, you know, to, in everything that we do, is this a critical role in terms of our goals right now? For me, mission critical is schools being open, students being educated, and staff being supported. So with everything that we do, you know, I, I try to think through that and see where we are with that. And from the start of this process, as we prepared to open schools, it was communicated to the Board of Education that the process of contact tracing, for example, would be managed by DHHS originally. I know that they, or I understand that they don't have the staffing, but we don't either. There, you know, I, I talked to someone a couple of weeks ago who wants to be and is qualified to be a parent educator or substitute. We've got our unions coming jointly even, testifying about how stretched thin everybody is, and this person was told that they could do contact tracing. I've seen on social media, and I, on, two days ago during public comments, someone commented about the dashboards not being accurate, but any data set has a standard deviation that people, I think, tend to forget about, and the state of Maryland only requires schools to notify those people who are directly impacted. And since we just are hiring 20 people to do contact tracing, which in my opinion, should maybe be done differently, but we need those supports in our schools, is what I'm trying to get at. And, you know, I'm concerned that some of our resources could be better utilized, so when I'm, so when I'm hearing people talking about the dashboards or the contact tracing and things like that, I'm asking myself, what is the return on that investment in terms of educating our students or sort of, I mean, I know how it's supporting our staff, which I am appreciative of, because our staff shouldn't be doing that, but I'm just not sure it's a critical role in terms of our, our goals for right now. And so I do hope that we will really take a look at making sure that, I mean, I know that the county has dashboards and things like that, and perhaps that we could coordinate better with them so that they're responsible for that stuff, and those 20 people that we're looking to hire could go in and be substitutes or parents or support staff in some way, or teachers if they have the credentials or, you know, whatever it might be. But I just kind of wanted to throw that in there. And then, kind of along with that, you know, as we are, you're talking about these new and innovative programs, how are we ensuring that we're being mindful of the staff that are already stretched so thin? Can you speak at all to some staff supports that we're going to provide or anything like that? I just...
I think what will be coming really in the next part of the presentation is really around the more discreet and distinct areas in the programming. And I think we'll probably hit on some of the, the details of the programming and how we're, we're measuring impact, because your point is well-taken. We know that staff are very much, you know, working through this crisis with all of us, and it is overwhelming. So what we are trying to be is very proactive about things and in, in a pandemic. So I think it would be important for us to really get into that next part of the presentation, and the, and then we'll come back to more questions.
Dr. Daka.
Yeah, I didn't really have a question, and I want to support what Ms. Mondroski was saying about the programs, and I really appreciate what you said about evaluating, because this has been a constant question. Of all the reading programs that we have, 180, and isn't there a new one called Lavinia or something like that? And it's just, it's overwhelming to look at those, which ones really work and with which kids. And then, the underachieving of, in math, for certain students that we have has been a constant problem, and it really does affect where they can go in terms of after they leave us. So I really appreciate you saying you're going to do some different kinds of evaluation, because we are just throwing the money out there, and we don't know whether it's really helping the kids or not. And I, I'm glad you're going into the next part about relief for our staff. I hope that's what you're going to be talking about.
Thank you. I also want to say that I want to associate myself with something Ms. Mondroski said, because I was thinking that same thing this morning. We are not public health. Why are we doing a dashboard? Because things come up so quickly that the minute you put it up, another school has an incident and the number's wrong. And so I wondered about that myself and was going to raise it. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break, so we'll come back at 11:40. Thank you.
We're back. Thank you. Would you like to continue?
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. I do want to note that the presenters for the remainder of this, excluding myself, are all being, are all virtual, as well as audience members. Since we did that to avoid too many transitions in between discussions. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Scott Murphy. And if we could pull the slide deck up, we're on slide 13.
Good morning. This is Scott Murphy, Director of College and Career Readiness and Districtwide Programs.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott. It's 12. We're on slide 12. If we can go back one more. Thank you. Continue, Scott.
Thank you. So here in this part of the presentation, we want to go a little bit deeper into the areas that we talked about before, particularly around how we intend to evaluate impact. The first priority program area for Esser Funding is summer programs, with the fundamental purpose being to mitigate learning disruption and accelerate learning recovery. Actually, at the board meeting this past Tuesday, we shared an in-depth analysis of the impact of summer programming for summer 2021, which was measured both quantitatively through academic measures and qualitatively with results from surveys that were administered to parents, students, and staff. This is an example of how we intend to evaluate impact moving forward, while also taking the feedback that you provided and addressing some of the questions that were raised. As you heard on Tuesday, last summer, we served over 50,000 students in one of the various programs. In summer 2022, we will continue to provide summer programming at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, a combination of local and central programs, both virtual and in-person options, at no cost to students, with transportation provided. Some of the suggestions for improvement that we discussed on Tuesday will also be incorporated. Moving forward, we will continue to evaluate impact through similar measures that were used to examine 2021, including academic measures such as the MAP assessments, pre- and post-assessments built into summer programming, and other external measures. As we evaluate impact, particular attention will be made to our student focus groups and students receiving services. We will also continue to gather feedback to measure satisfaction and make continuous improvements. The next slide is another program being supported by Esser Funding, which we also talked about on Tuesday, tutoring interventions and enrichment, again focused on mitigating learning disruption, accelerating learning recovery, especially for students who have been most impacted by the learning disruption. For tutoring and interventions, funding will cover compensation for MCPS teachers and paraeducators to deliver tutoring and interventions to students outside the school day. The high dosage tutoring means at least three times per week for 60 to 90 minutes for students who are identified based on multiple criteria. Funding is also being used to contract with external tutoring providers to supplement the MCPS tutoring program, support our staff, and widen the reach of what is available to students. An RFP for these tutoring services was issued a couple of months ago, and we expect to bring recommendations to the board on November 9. We will be coming back to you in the coming weeks and months with more detailed, specific implementation planning for the tutoring program. Similar to summer programs, impact will be evaluated through academic measures like the MAP, state assessments known as MCAP, other assessments that are built into the tutoring program, as well as surveys. We will also be monitoring student progress in real time through grades and overall progress within our Evidence of Learning framework. If successful, we will continue to see accelerated rates of learning recovery as we go through the next two years, as measured by more students at or above grade level, accelerating rates of growth, continued improvement in student success in their courses, and more students meeting two or more measures within the Evidence of Learning framework. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chevanini for the next area.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy, and good morning. I am joined today by Dr. Tran Camp and Mr. McGee, who will help and present the Esser Technology Update and answer any questions that you may have. As you know, over the past year, we purchased, implemented, and expanded on technologies for all of our stakeholders at MCPS. Esser Funding has been used to support the purchase of equipment, software, and applications, and to launch the Virtual Academy. These efforts directly align with the DCEF efforts to mitigate learning disruption and promote and enhance digital learning and support. Here are some details on each of the three areas of investments. The first area that we invested was in equipment. Chromebooks, laptops, and hotspots were purchased in order to ensure that all of our students and staff could connect to each other and to learning experiences from remote locations. With these funds, we were able to purchase and distribute more than 120,000 Chromebooks, 14,000 laptops, and over 12,000 MiFi hotspots for both families and staff who needed them. We also purchased more than 15,000 document cameras and 5,000 streaming cameras for classrooms. Interactive panels were purchased to provide schools with the ability to use more spaces for small group learning, social distancing, and for broadcasting visual learning to remote locations by sharing their large interactive screens. Through focus groups, usage statistics, and the analysis of help desk tickets, we continue to evaluate how hardware and technology devices best meet the needs of different stakeholders. Two years ago, we conducted a survey to determine the percentage of connectivity for families for available devices across our MCPS community. We plan to conduct this connectivity survey again later this school year to evaluate our efforts to date on providing the access to internet and to devices. A second area where we dedicate Esser Funds was purchasing additional applications and software. With Esser Tech Funding, we purchased Zoom, the district web conferencing tool that allowed us to connect with each other, students and parents. It kept us connected in the pandemic, and we have since found that Zoom provides us with a way to overcome space and time by broadcasting and recording events like parent-to-conferences and back-to-school nights. We have usage data on Zoom as well as stakeholder feedback, and we use that to modify our configurations and ensure that it continues to meet the needs of staff and students. With these funds, we also purchased software to help teachers create more interactive lessons. Applications like Nearpod, Cami, Canvas Studio provide teachers with tools to create ways for students to engage in learning and actively participate in instructional experiences. Using data, as well as, I'm sorry, using usage data, as well as data from a survey to be sent later this school year, we will gather important information on the successes and challenges of these applications. A third area where Esser Funds have been used and will continue to be used is for the creation and launch and operation of the Virtual Academy. Dr. Tran Camp will update you on the status of that academy and the academy budget. Dr. Tran Camp?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chevanini. Good morning, almost afternoon. As you know, part of the initial vision for digital learning and support was focused on creating virtual learning opportunities for students with extenuating circumstances. Today, we're really excited to share that more than 3,000 students are currently enrolled in our Virtual Academy, with more than 200 staff hired as teachers, counselors, paraeducators, and leaders dedicated to serving these students. Esser Funds have also been earmarked for continuing to staff the academy in future years and to also purchase instructional materials, supplies, and to expand access to virtual clubs, extracurricular activities, and layer in an evening program later on this school year, we're actively engaged in that right now, where students can enroll and take classes beyond the school day. In the next two months, we will be conducting a review of performance data, as well as collecting stakeholder feedback from teachers, staff, parents, and students. We plan to collect data in the spring of this year as well, so that we have, you know, early, early school year data and then a full year's worth of data. This data is going to be used to identify improvements and next steps as we plan the future of the Virtual Academy. You may also know too, from other meetings, that data will be collected by MSDE four times per year to evaluate student performance in the Virtual Academy. We have not yet gotten our first data request from MSDE, but we do expect that in the next month or so. Part of the district's future strategy around digital learning and support is to provide students with access to courses and digital learning experiences beyond what might be available at their homeschool. This means beyond the school day to accommodate students who work or need or want additional credits or experiences. It also means providing equity of access to a wide range of courses. We know we've heard that come up around foreign language, around some other specialty courses that may not be offered as part of the comprehensive school program. We're really looking forward to working with all of our stakeholders to build out this vision and begin putting it into action. At this time, Mr. Davis will continue with the presentation.
Good morning and thank you, Dr. Tran Camp. Good morning to our board members, as well as to Dr. McKnight. If we could go to the next slide, please? Thank you. I'm pleased to represent Student and Family Support and Engagement, along with several of the SFSE directors who were present in the virtual audience, to share the alignment of Esser Funding area SEL and wellbeing to our DCEF, as well as how we are evaluating impact, particularly around wellbeing support. During my section, I will speak to the following items: the Social Emotional or SEL curriculum, Social Emotional Learning Curriculum, SEL engagement through sports for middle school, wellness coordinators and coaches, and diversion. I would first like to thank the Board of Ed for their support of a universal SEL curriculum. As you are aware, it is currently being implemented in 80 schools in our Cohort One, thanks to the support of a multi-stakeholder SEL work group and with the support of a cross-functional team that includes colleagues from the Office of Teaching Learning in Schools, as well as others. We are preparing for the implementation of Cohorts Two and Three schools over the next two years. As the Board has previously heard, the Leader and Me SEL curriculum aligns with several MCPS initiatives, including the Be Well 365, our anti-racism work, as well as with the CASL, or Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning Core Competencies. Their curriculum engages students, families, and staff. Each of these stakeholder groups will complete the Measurable Results Assessment, which is also known as the MRA, in the fall to gather a baseline. I know that I received this information from my son's school and have heard my own fifth grader speak about the SEL lessons, particularly his preferred habit, in a positive way. The MRA will again be completed in the spring to determine growth areas in the following: climate and culture, academic engagement, and leadership. We are collaborating with Dr. Addison and the Office of Shared Accountability to interpret, analyze, and evaluate our results, and are happy to return to the Board at a future date to share additional details. Next slide, please. Our second item is SEL engagement through sports for middle school students. As a father of a child who participated in athletics in middle school during the pandemic, I recognize and witnessed firsthand the positive impact that this type of involvement can have on a child's social, emotional wellbeing. Athletics truly served as a springboard to success through pandemic recovery. Through collaboration with Dr. Sullivan, our system-wide athletic director, as well as our partners in school support and improvement, our goal is to expand and enhance interscholastic athletics, particularly for our students with disabilities, as well as those in our target focus groups. Programming will be offered on a pilot basis during the 2022 Spring. during the 2022 Spring and Fall Seasons and would be determined collaboratively based on student interest. In addition to enhanced connections to school and between staff and students, impact will be measured based on student participation. Next slide, please. The third item relates to staff support. Although the primary goal of BeWell 365 is to provide students with knowledge, skills, and abilities to support academic growth and lifelong personal and career success, it is critical that we are reminded that the BeWell 365 Initiative, excuse me, is meant to support the physical, social, and psychological wellbeing of all students, all staff, and all schools. It is critical that we provide supports to our staff as is stated by the S and Prosper, Supporting Staff to Meet Student Needs. In addition to our Employee Assistance Program, or EAP, and Well-Aware Programs that I have shared previously, several staff supports include the following: our wellness coordinators, who support physical, mental, and emotional needs. They do so by developing and implementing tools to assess individual employee wellness. Once staff are assessed, they analyze the results and create content and/or activities to address their needs and reassess to determine the impact. Employees may currently receive support from the Wellness Coordinator in our Employee and Retiree Services Center, Ursky, to meet the additional needs. EAP is in the process of hiring two additional wellness coordinators. A Wellness Coach serves our colleagues in the Department of Transportation. She designs and implements creative wellness programs, including those staff with health risk. The goal and theme is something for everybody. In addition to using physical fitness assessments, results are measured through weight loss, lifestyle changes, and participation in wellness programs, which can range anywhere from the annual spring break hike to Zumba. The Wellness Coach works collaboratively with the Wellness Coordinator in Ursky. Next slide, please. The final item relates to the Diversion Program. In MCPS, our data shows disproportionality in suspensions and other exclusionary practices for students of color and for students with special education services. As a reminder, the purpose of the Diversion Program is to reduce disproportionate arrests, exclusions, and suspensions among students of color in our district, particularly in our high schools. In addition to providing professional development, such as our restorative justice training to almost 11,000 staff members, which included an anti-bias and anti-racist lens, we've implemented several programs, including our Supri, or Substance Use Prevention and Resiliency Education, and semi-student-empowered mentoring engagement, which I have shared with the Board previously. Next slide, please. As we shared during our meeting last week with the Strategic Planning Committee, one of our performance targets is to reduce the percentage of Black, African-American, and Hispanic students receiving out-of-school suspensions for disrespect and disruption. Monitoring will include quarterly school suspension data review, semester school restorative justice walkthroughs, as well as staff and student voice data. In addition to continued professional learning, including supports for reintegrating our students who are returning from a Department of Juvenile Services placement, the work of diversion will include the creation of a central office student wellbeing team to review student cases that are considered for a 10-day suspension, recommendation for expulsion, or for any student who has been suspended more than once. As a reference in my previous comments regarding our BeWell 365 initiative for all students, all staff, and all schools, this is in direct alignment to each of these four items, as well as with our Six Essentials, particularly regarding mental and emotional health, restorative justice, restorative practices, and physical health and wellness. Next slide, please. I will now turn it over to Ms. Wolf for discussion.
Please turn your light on if you have a question. Ms. Mandrowski?
Yeah, thank you. So going back to my question from before about supporting our staff and everything, I appreciate the wellness aspect of it, the mental health support of it. Can you speak to what we're doing, though, to actually support them in having, in the human capital side of things in terms of making sure that we have enough, before we start bringing in and expecting more from anybody, how we're making sure that we have enough supports in the schools during the school day to, to help them get through?
I'm sure I can. But I was gonna, thank you, Mr. Davis. I'm gonna let you address it. And I'm gonna ask that we've done a number of things around initiatives or support from Human Resources as well as OTLS. So I'm gonna ask them, after Mr. Davis finishes, to speak to some of those supports.
Yes, and I was just gonna start off by sharing again, just to reiterate the supports that, and thinking about a recent, just to illustrate one example of a school that was challenged with some disciplinary concerns that they had reached out, in addition to the Student Family and Support Team, that they had also reached out to our Employee Assistance Program. I'm just thinking of even deploying within our SFSE team, some of our school psychologists, our school counselors. There was a, unfortunately, a recent death in one of our schools of a staff member. And so that our team went and supported that particular staff member. It happened to be a counselor, unfortunately. And so the counselors were there to provide support to the counselors. So although I mentioned the wellness coordinators and the wellness coaches, I think it's important to also know that support does come from our central office. I know our 1OTLS, I just mentioned SFSE is one example, but it is provided across the Board within our 1OTLS team. But I can allow my colleagues who represent Ursky, as well as EAP, to speak a bit further. And I know I do have some of the directors in SFSE who are on the line as well.
So I also wanted to just jump in to say that this is the first year that we actually have restorative justice coaches that are provided a stipend. And we were actually able to raise that amount to a very, one that got a lot of people to sign up to be a restorative justice coach. And so we do have restorative justice coaches in all of our secondary schools, and we're currently working on staffing up the elementary schools as well.
And I appreciate that. And I'll let Dr. Nixon speak to it too. But the stipend aspect is part of where I was gonna be heading with it, so thank.
So in terms of the Employee Assistance Programs and the Wellness Programs, we advertise those and promote those in terms of having our staff members that need the services. But I do just wanna say something about EAP. It's, while they do offer a tremendous array of services in terms of social and emotional support for staff, both internally and externally through the KPRO, because we do contract out the counseling sessions as well. EAP does also host an array of services to our staff members, from a staff member who had to put their parent in hospice, for example, and the EAP team that was able to find for them a variety of care facilities that could take the elderly for memory care, for example. They help staff members with budgeting, with finance, help them get family counseling. So our EAP program is very robust, again, internal and external with our KPRO consultants. And we have seen the use of EAP since the pandemic began increase. And so with that, and the work that we've done through the DCEP meetings and the attention put on that, being able to hire the wellness coordinators as well, will reinforce the kinds of services that we can provide for our employees. And of course, the wellness programs, the promotion of healthy lifestyle, those kinds of things are ongoing as well.
I, thank you. I think more of my question was actually about, in this funding, can we put, is our stipends covered? And can we put more money into them to help for the extra work that our staff is already doing in terms of, you know, taking on new jobs or doing further after-school programming type of stuff? And I just didn't know what's covered with this funding. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Mandrowski. Some of what you're referencing, we have a process for that we bargain with our associations in terms of how we're using funding to do different things. So that is a process that is separate from what we are talking about right now. But to generally express some of the stipends that we are considering for how we can provide additional support are absolutely included in these funds. But I just wanna be careful about that conversation because we do have to work within our processes that we have that speaks to some of the specifics that you're asking.
All right, I'll just let them go first.
Okay, Ms. Harris?
Thank you. I have a question, I think this would go to Mr. Chevenini. You were talking about some of the apps that we've purchased as a school system to enable teachers to plan and implement virtual lessons, but also their tools for lesson delivery on an ongoing basis. You mentioned NearPod and Cami and Canvas Studio. We talked about a survey is being done. Are we, are we asking teachers and students about how useful they're finding these tools, how easy they're finding them to use? And students, they're, you know, how engaging they're finding the use of these, these things in the classroom?
Yes, we, yes, we're providing both surveys to those groups, but also looking at usage data to find out if, even though they say it's good, if it's not used, right? It's not really that important. And also, we're looking at help desk services as well to see about whether or not we need to provide more professional development and other types of learning opportunities to help staff if they need that, that support.
Okay. Good. And this, I think, is for Dr. Trent Kimp. I just wanna circle back for clarification. You were talking about classes being offered outside the school day virtually. And I think you were saying, you know, that these are classes that are available, not just to Virtual Academy students, but this is the model that we've talked about several times in the past, to make opportunities available to students whose homeschools might not be able to provide those?
Absolutely. We've already done a little bit of that this year so far with providing access to some students who needed access to a particular foreign language class that wasn't able to be offered at their school. Maybe the numbers were low. Maybe they had difficulty finding a teacher for that level of language. We also have partnered with our elementary schools to help offer accelerated math at Grade Four and Grade Five for those elementary schools, again, who either had some low numbers for those classes or had some difficulty securing a teacher that could teach. So we already have some partnerships underway, and those have been really successful so far. I think they've been going really well, and we'd like to expand that. Within the school day is very tricky because we have to match up the bell schedules. And as you know, the bell schedules is a local school decision around how they schedule their individual day. But beyond the school day is, is really a great opportunity to have kids take additional courses or substitute courses and really be able to expand that. And so really looking at that after-school program and evening program, maybe even looking at Saturday programs, this virtual notion, so that kids can really take advantage of a lot of different opportunities that they might not otherwise have access to.
So is the plan to add additional opportunities in the spring? Or are we kind of staying where we are now, reevaluating, and looking to ramp up further for '22, '23?
So we have a work group that has convened to not only take a look at the immediate needs of the Virtual Academy, but then where we wanna go. Right now, that work group is looking at that evening program. In addition, they're looking at some after-school clubs and activities where we can stand up the clubs and activities. We're looking at marking period two. The evening program, we, we have been back and forth between somewhere in the middle of marking period two, although that is really just upon us right now. So more realistically, we're looking at second semester, which actually dovetails nicely with our high school students who may, in fact, need to take an additional course, whether it be for on-time graduation, maybe a health, a health credit, maybe just an additional experience beyond what they already had scheduled in their day.
Okay, thank you. And a question, I think this goes to Mr. Davis. So the, the pilot you were talking about around middle school athletics, can you give a little more information about how many of our 40 middle schools are getting the pilot? And are we, is this something? You mentioned the choice of activities would be, you know, determined by interest. So is this intermural activities? So if each school could decide on its own what, what things it wanted to add? Or are we looking at a system thing? So we're talking about inter-school competition?
No, thank you for the question, Ms. Harris. And this is still being developed. Like I said, I'm working in collaboration with colleagues with Dr. Sullivan, of course, in athletics, and also colleagues in SSI. So it not, it is not fully developed. But to answer your question, the, the last question, I believe you posed, was about whether it was intermural, interscholastic. The thought is that it would be interscholastic, so among our middle schools.
So it would be a question among the pilot schools to choose collectively what they wanted to add?
Yes, that is correct, based on, based on student interest.
And I guess this is just for my own information, but are we looking at a, I hate to use the word, but regular or normal middle school athletic year? So cross-country softball, basketball, soccer, and track for all middle schools?
And as I said, those details have not been finalized. I know that that's something that Dr. Sullivan and his team are still working through.
Okay, thank you. And I think my last question also goes to you as well. Talking about the collection, the diversion data that you're collecting, quarterly semester and end of year, will we be getting those updates as that data is collected?
Yes, I would be happy to return to, to share additional updates, yes.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Holooney? Yes, Ms. Harris actually already touched on one of my comments about expanding those virtual courses to students to increase access to different elective opportunities. I know it's worked really well with dual enrollment with Montgomery College. I see a lot of students in the Media Center at my school and at other schools logged onto their Chromebooks, taking a college course in the middle of the school day. And that is with different bell times, if you can say it that way. So I've seen it work really well, and I see a lot of potential for that. My question was going to be about the Virtual Academy. I know that MSDE is requiring a quarterly report on what's happening with that. I know when we originally talked about the Virtual Academy at the beginning of the school year, Ms. Sharon, you mentioned that at the end of every quarter, there would be an opportunity for students to switch in or out of the Virtual Academy. So as we're nearing the end of first quarter, exactly a week from today, it would be great if the Board could get a copy of what that enrollment change is looking like. Yeah, that was just my, my comment. Thank you.
Ms. Mandrowski?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up question to Ms. Harris's point about, don't we? I thought that we had already been working with, through alternative programs on offering classes on Saturdays and in the evenings. Are we not doing that anymore? I know at one point that, that Dr. Navarro and I had had a lot of conversations about that and the expansion of the alternative program overall.
We do have some after-school and evening programs, evening program and Saturday program still. We do still offer those. The Saturday program, most of that is in person, but it is, you know, very popular. The Saturday program, most of that is in person, but it is, you know, very popular and widely attended and will continue. And our evening program is really grounded, it's our online pathways to graduation. We have that. We have where kids can take an additional course. We're looking at expanding that. So our, our idea is to partner with Scott Murphy and his team, Brian Bobian, to really take a look at the, what we're offering to kids in the evening and on Saturday, just virtually, so that they don't actually have to come, like we do with health, even a hybrid experience, where they may do most of their work online, but they may have to come in person a couple of times during that marking period for assessments or group discussions or projects or things like that. So it's really looking at what we currently offer and then really building on that for a virtual setting.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And like I said, because it's something we've been talking about for so long in terms of expanding the opportunities for our students. My only last question is in reference to the technology. I was glad to hear, you know, that we're still offering and providing hotspots to families who need help with connectivity. I tried using one one time, and I found that if there wasn't good phone service, that there wasn't good connective Wi-Fi service through the hotspot either. So I know that we can, did a survey of, you know, several years ago, I think it was, and I'm to, about the effectiveness and how much we were helping. And I'm just curious as to whether or not we're planning on doing anything like that again, to find out if we're meeting the needs of our families or if there's still additional things, you know, what's working, what's not working.
I know, I, oh, there you go, Mr. Chevenini. I, I was just going to say, yes, this does speak to the broadband issue that we've been discussing in the county. I, I know last year, the, the system worked with the county to make sure that we had put up some antennas and other things, just to generally help out with that whole issue of Wi-Fi. And that, that process started last spring, when those discussions came up in the fall, when we were still all virtual. So Pete, any updates since then in terms of our work with the county?
I, yes, we're continuing to work with them about the antennas. If there are families who have issues with our particular main carrier that we use, we also have alternative carriers. Ms. McGee can talk a little bit more about the alternative carriers, because there are three carriers in the county that we use. So T-Mobile, I think, is one. Ms. McGee, what are the other two?
Of course. Hello, everybody. Good afternoon. The other two providers that offer similar services would be, of course, AT&amp;T and Verizon, which are two services we use frequently. But to answer the question about the broadband capabilities and the work we're doing with the county, there have been some, there has been a lot of discussions around trying to make the program available, which is Comcast has an At Home or an Essentials, basically a broadband cable internet service, that since the pandemic began, they've freely made available to families that have requested it. It used to be an, a, a process by which they would make an application and have to prove a need or a justification of some kind. And I believe, the last I knew, Comcast, among the things that they were doing with the county, was trying to make that an easier technology for some of our families at home and in need to take advantage of. So the county has been keeping us posted on those types of opportunities, as well as looking at some of the, the building spaces where we have the need and some of our high occupancy dwelling spaces where HOC has worked with Montgomery County Government to help find places where they can outfit those facilities with fiber optics and wireless access points so that the, there's a better level of access for some of those homes that have those cell capability difficulties and some of those other things. So there's, there has been a lot of work on those fronts. Some of it has been a lot of agreements that have been tried, that are being worked through with Comcast to make some of those services available to our families, as well as some actual facilities and installation projects and initiatives that have been mostly, would be mostly the responsibility of Montgomery County Government and their FiberNet product to put into some of these facilities.
Thanks. I just have a follow-up with that. Do, are there limitations on access? Like, so you were talking about some of these apps and stuff, but like, a lot of times, even in the building here, I find I can't log into certain apps because there's, you know, they block it for our students and stuff. So I was just curious if there are limitations on those, on that.
I can speak to the, basically, the, the technology that we use that is designed to help prevent, you know, access to some of the students in terms of not showing harmful content, could, you know, could inadvertently be blocking content they should be getting to. We, we basically subscribe to a service that is very dynamic in its nature in terms of trying to evaluate websites and things that comprise websites in terms of what might be considered harmful content. And by way of doing that, that, those sites are categorized, and our technologies are designed by default to block some of those categories. There may be things that are being blocked inadvertently, and when our team is made aware of it, we evaluate the site, work with the provider, and then usually, within a matter of minutes, we can make those sites available again. So at the moment, we think we're being responsive. We think that the, our, our student community has access to the websites they need access to, as well as responding quickly to those that don't, and we're made aware.
And just to add on that, Ms. Mandrowski, our devices, both our Wi-fis and our Chromebooks, are filtered and supported 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So even if a student brings a device home, or if they connect their Wi-Fi device, their device at your home, they're all filtered according to our school policies all the time, which is a good thing.
Ms. Sylvester.
Yes, I, I wanted to go back to the tutoring. Maybe I, I think I heard you say that you're going to give us more details about how tutoring is going to be implemented in the future. But could you just tell us again how the, the impact of tutoring will be evaluated? In, yeah, just briefly, please.
Yeah, so as I said, a big part of the tutoring plan are the external providers who we have not identified yet. So once those are identified, we're going to come back to you with a more detailed implementation plan, comprehensively of what it looks like now with the external vendors. The evaluation of impact will be similar to what we talked about with summer, with looking at academic growth measures such as the MAP, as well as assessments that are built in, as well as surveys of how people are experiencing it.
Okay. In terms of technology, my colleagues will have to help me here, but when we met with McCAP, McBoa, they talked about some technology issues in terms of testing? Was it entering students on testing? If anyone can articulate that better than I can, and I wondered if that's being addressed.
It was McCAP, and they were talking about when the coordinator for the, the testing coordinator has to upload the names that the different, like, that our systems don't speak to each other, so it's almost like they're doing double entry. And don't quote me on that exactly, but something to the extent that we dear, that we did hear a lot of.
Yeah, I think one of, some of the folks talked about having multiple different tools they were using, and at one point, having just a cut and paste from multiple spreadsheets to track students who required accommodations, which seemed like a very, well, they said it was a very time-consuming process.
Well, I think the, the complexity behind some of that is the fact that it's not always the programs that we have or that we run internally. Some of these testing programs, like Pearson, is, is the testing program that is used, that we are being asked to use, that is, is not us. But what we can do is take a look and have a conversation with the folks in OSA to see how we can make this easier, more easily merge with, with the work that we're doing with synergy. Mr. Chevenini, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Ms. Sharon, I think you summarized it great. The reality is there's multiple platforms, and we continue to work with our testing folks to improve that process.
And can I, may I also add then, as a specific follow-up? Let's make sure that OSA, the Office of Technology, meets with McCAP and some of our principals directly so that we can solve that problem or look at ways that we can address it. And then we will follow up with the board in terms of how we are able to resolve any part of that. And I just say that, that's, that's really important and an example for us to think about if there are any ways in which we can improve processes for staff, considering everything that's happening, let's absolutely do everything within our power and control to try to do that. So that we will absolutely follow up on. I do know that it was also raised in our SEIU meeting that many of our staff have experienced not having the technology that they need, some staff members getting the older technology in and not addressing some of the services that they provide. And then, most importantly, I thought this was a great point that they brought up, which was that we've increased our technology exponentially over the past year. We are managing over 30 million more, and I, I got the numbers in my head, that was about how much we spent, 30 million in technology since the pandemic occurred, but we have not made any significant adjustments in our infrastructure to be able to manage that. And so SEIU brought that up, so that is absolutely one that we are looking into and studying so that we can address that, because we do want to have the manpower to manage and operationalize all of this new technology that we do have, so that it does not become vertiginous on staff. So I, I do remember that one as well and wanted to elevate that, that, that is absolutely a priority that I've directed the staff to look into and that the board will be hearing more about.
And just to add, what Dr. McKnight stated is that we are actively, Mr. Chevenini is actively working with SEIU in order to figure out which support staff are, do not have the technology they need, but even going a step further and making sure that they're also receiving the professional development that they need in order to adequately use the technology, as well as support students in the classroom with the technology. Mr. Chevenini, I don't know if you have any additionals around that?
Yes, absolutely. We are surveying and talking to all of our professionals right now, as a matter of fact, and finding out who needs newer devices, and then professional development will follow when to get those new devices into their hands. That's our next phase.
My final question is about the Leader in Me curriculum. I think I've gotten a couple of emails about, and I don't know how, how true this is, but that it's very corporate-focused and really hasn't been adapted to the educational setting, and that it's very outdated, like you're watching videos from 1980. So I, I don't know if, if that's a fact, but since we are putting a lot of staff through that training, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's effective and, and relevant. I, I know it's relevant, but, you know, adapted to an educational setting. And if you could, someone, just remind me again, in elevator speech, the purpose of Leader in Me, just to have it top of mind.
I'll take it. Elevator speech. So essentially, this is our SEL curriculum. We instituted it in, in response to COVID-19, but we always knew as a component of BWL 365 that we wanted to do something across the district to address the mental health and support needs that our students and our staff need. In reference to the curriculum itself, there are several things I'll just mention quickly. Much like we're doing with Benchmark, we are going to evaluate the curriculum. There is an existing committee that's working actively with the vendor to take a look at where we need to improve and where we need to align with our MCPS curriculum values and just the way that we do things here.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin. I just want to add to that, Ms. Sylvester, great point. Anytime we roll out a, scoot over, yes, it's on. Anytime we roll out a new program, it is exactly that, just, it's new. We are still dealing with a lot of the stresses from the pandemic that folks are managing in school buildings, but there is oftentimes a mixed review of, you know, whether it is the conditions of which we're implementing. It's something new in addition to what people are already doing that does cause a certain amount of, you know, stress in some ways. But I will say, our commitment to any program that we implement, one, has to be focused on what do we know is best for our students, and two, how do we best support the staff to implement it so that it's not a hardship on them. This summer, when I met with the principals, they openly shared what some of the, and some of what you were sharing, some of the concerns that they had after they went through the pandemic. And so that's why, as Ms. Rubin said, we were able to address it immediately with the vendor and say, here's some concerns from our staff about some components of this, what can we do to adjust it? And this is how we know when we work with good, great vendors, because then they say, thank you, you're making us help with better product by giving us that feedback. And so that's their willingness to be able to adapt and adjust. I will also say that I had a chance to visit some schools, and some schools are raving about this program and, and cannot stop talking about how implementation of it has allowed them to build community in their school in a different way. So, you know, I just shared that example with you because this is oftentimes what we experience, you know, some struggling through implementation and then some thriving through it, but throughout the process, getting the feedback to say, what do we need to do to improve the product or the process of implementation so that it does work for every school?
But just, I'm still not, I, I still can't tell the public, as a result of Leader in Me, your child will what? I, I think I tell, I think I joked, I said, be your best self? I mean, the...
Be your best self, be a leader in your school in a way that is meaningful to your school community. You will be a, a community builder regardless to your age, whatever, you have the capacity to do that. We could, we could continue on.
... strategies to be able to cope with the, and managing a variety of different mental health needs. I think that's a significant part of it, is the strategies that the students get about how to cope with different things, it gives them a skill set that we as adults have, but now it's really teaching them in a special way.
Exactly. And it's that when they have the capacity and the skills and the strategy to do that for themselves, they can, one, help themselves, but secondly, help another. And so that's how then they're able to build a community of just a, a, a strong foundation of, of support.
Thank you. And I, I think I recall that you went through a, a committee review process to select the curriculum that you ended up choosing, right?
Yes, and, and we can provide all of that to the board. That was an extensive process that we engaged in for months before selecting any vendor. Very robust process. We followed it to the letter. We had many of our colleagues, OHRD and others alongside us, parent, community members, staff, students on that work group. And so we've kept all of those notes. And the great part about the committee that I mentioned, individuals who participated on that work group are also on this committee, specialists across MCPS, so that we're really actively working with the vendor to make those improvements.
Thank you so much.
Back to Dr.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting to hear about the testing coordinators. I know I mentioned before that they used to bring people in from retirement to take over so that the testing coordinators could do what they need to do. And I just think we need to emphasize how accurate they have to be and how much work they have to do to make sure that the right test gets the right student and all the accommodations are there. And they also have to reschedule and so that places, so that kids have a place to go to teach, and the teachers know what they're covering and what they're monitoring. So I, I think that anything we can do to help with the testing coordinators, I think is really important. And I think that COVID, as some of you have been already saying, has made us think differently about things. We are much more expansive in our ideas. We have provided more experiences. I, I like restorative justice, and you're saying 1,100 people are involved in that? The question is, are they teachers? Are they teachers and others? Or, and I think restorative justice goes into the Leader in Me as well, because they have to be concerned about how they're affecting other people. But I don't, go ahead, I don't want to cut you off like that.
There we go. Yes, the 11,000 were SEIU, MCEA, as well as our McCAP leaders who engaged over the summer.
Thank you. Also, when we were talking about the virtual academy, I was thrilled to hear the things that you're doing with the virtual academy, you know, kids who have to work, and they have to take courses at a different time, kids that need a course that is not at their school. And I always think about Russian at BCC, before you guys were born. Everybody wanted to take it, but they couldn't, because that's the only place they had it. So now that we can, we can do that. I just have a logistical question about that. If it's during the school day and they want to take that advanced trig course, how, what do we do? Where do the students do this and are they supervised? And that's a simple question, okay. And before, we used to have middle school students traveling to the high school to take algebra, and we've moved beyond that. So, but now we can keep them where they are and they can take these courses. And I, I think that's all I want to say about that. I'm, I'm worried about the coordinators. I'm glad that we're doing the restorative justice and margin numbers and that... I'm glad that we're doing the restorative justice and margin numbers and that we have the virtuals. And I just want to end with middle school sports that came up. But many years ago, we cut back on interscholastic sports for middle schools. It was a very bitter decision, people have never gotten over it. And so now it looks like we're going to look at it again and they will not be limited to four engagements in their interscholastic works or activities. So I think that's a good thing. So a lot of, I don't know, one or two good things came out of having to do this and to rethink the way that we're preparing for our students. Did you want to say something?
Yes, I did want to comment on one of the comments you brought up, Draka, and I thought it was a great example. And I can only speak to this having the experience that I've had in MCPS as an AP and a principal. The testing process that we go through in our system is so, and I would imagine every, every school system, meticulous, very detailed, down to the point. I remember, and anyone who's been in the system, if you've been in testing coordinator, you know this. As an administrator, you essentially relieve yourself of administrative duties during the testing season because it is so much of a daunting task. That is absolutely one that I look at us having the opportunity to solve as a system. And that's an example of, this has always been a part of what we have done in our structures. But right now, we really have to think about how we're utilizing everyone's time in a much more intentional way. And knowing the learning needs, knowing the support of the staff, this is an opportune, time for us to really look at how this can be something that we really dig into and be innovative in regards to what we do in the system. So I thank you for sharing that one because that was a very concrete example of a process that we have struggled with over the years that is detail-oriented, time-consuming. And it's a great question asked today, does this still work? And what can we do about it? So thank you.
I know this is off the subject sort of, but I remember when we had the functional exams that came from the state and we used to have to measure out water and dirt and macaroni and so that they could do group projects during the exams. So we've moved a long way from that.
If it's any consolation, Dr. Daka, I remember that too.
Ms. Evans?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I appreciate Dr. Daka mentioning that as well because that was something that really stood out for me when we heard from McCAP and McBoyle at our annual meeting. And I also recall some, an administrator telling the story of one of the testing coordinators just having a nightmare that she may have forgotten a student or if everything was entered correctly. So I'm glad that we will take a look at that. I appreciate something just simple that, well, that sounds simple, but that we can look at pretty quickly and see how we can make that adjustment. And I also wanted to go back to Leader in Me. I think I had mentioned when we were getting the presentation that Harmony Hills did that many years ago. Sydney is now a freshman in college, so that was when she was in elementary school. And it was a huge program at the school. It just wasn't continued because of the money, the resources. But I do know that parents are really excited and kids thought about, you know, they were thoughtful in how they would approach a variety of things as a result of the program being there. And there was a book that was given to every parent. And it was called The Seven Habits of Happy Kids. And I still have the book at home, so I would definitely, I would share it with Mrs., with Ms. Sevastri. And that way you can kind of see how it helped the kids and the families. So there were stories in there and there was a parent resource at the end of every story to try to help kids and parents think about, you know, how to put things, how to put first things first or how to synergize. So it was really a great program. So I am happy to see that we're finding a way to implement that because it could be a huge benefit to our students. And as I'm hearing from some of the educators, it has been helpful to them in their approach to the work as well. Those are my comments. And then I also wanted to say, Mr. Davis had mentioned some of the wellness opportunities that could come for staff. I'm so happy that we are highlighting what we are doing to support our staff's social, emotional wellbeing. And even as a board member, if Zumba came somewhere, came somewhere close by, I would definitely like to join. So keep us, keep us tuned in to the yoga and all the other things that we could possibly pop in. I know I would like to, it helps to sometimes sweat it out, right? So anyway, thank you all for the work that's being done. Thank you for this detailed report to really show the, how the dollars are being spent. You know, our community always asks, how much money does this cost? And so it's good to be able to break it down for everyone and then just share the work and talk about it. So I like that we'll be coming back on a quarterly basis by semester and the year with some reports. So, thank you.
Okay, I think you can... I think you can continue, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We can pull the slide deck back up, please. And I believe we are transitioning to Mr. Weeby. It's all you, Mr. Weeby.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. McKnight. I'm pleased to be able to share information regarding the staffing resources included within the Esser III grant. Included in the grant are 20 counselors to support our most poverty-impacted schools, 18 counselors for additional wellbeing and support, 50 social workers for wellbeing and support, six assistant school administrators and two fully released teachers in single administrator schools, and additionally, staffing to support students in quarantine as well as a recruitment and retention incentive for all MCPS staff. The social, emotional needs of our students are paramount importance and attracting, selecting and hiring mental health professionals for our students is a priority for OHRD. We have developed a strategic recruitment framework to support hiring of critical shortage areas, including targeted strategies for mental health professionals. OHRD continues to leverage the relationships built with local colleges and universities to hire December graduates in the coming weeks and months. Additionally, we've invested in targeted media buys on specific platforms, including LinkedIn, Twitter and association websites, including the National Association of School Psychologists and the National Association of Professional School Counselors. Our goal is to provide our students with the necessary mental health support professionals needed to thrive. Once hired, our new employees will be provided with robust and responsive professional development focused on their individual needs. Once they're deployed to our schools, our professional growth system will be leveraged by the school principal or supervisor to evaluate the effectiveness of the newly hired employees. And the Office of Family Support and Engagement and Collaboration with the Office of Teaching, Learning and Schools will evaluate the effectiveness and impact of the additional staffing provided as part of the Esser grant on the students and school community using multiple and varied measures, included but not limited to data from our school wellbeing teams, the ratios of students to mental health professionals in our schools, as well as office referral data. Next, Dr. Loke Muzatzos will continue the presentation.
Greetings, board members, and thank you for this opportunity to share information about the use of Esser funding on professional learning. My name is Margie Loke Muzatzos, Assistant Chief of Professional Learning in the Office of Human Resources and Development. And I am joined by Damon Monteleone, Assistant Chief of Teaching, Learning and Schools. Esser funds were used for the strategic purpose of developing the capacity of staff to meet the needs of students during distance learning and to ensure staff are trained to effectively utilize digital learning tools, mitigate learning disruption, meet students' wellness needs and provide required special education services. Specifically, Esser funds were used to fund new technology platforms such as Zoom, NearPod and Cami and train staff on how to effectively use them to engage students in remote learning. Additionally, a focus was on ensuring MyMCPS Canvas was implemented as the uniform MCPS learning platform and synergy was effectively implemented as the uniform student information system. We have also set aside funding to provide training and support for the use of ParentView for our families. We are measuring the impact of technology funding through training participant survey data, stakeholder feedback on learning experiences and use, and data usage in the digital learning platforms. A second area of funding has been and will continue to be on the development, implementation and training of ESEL and general education staff on English language online content and pedagogy. We anticipate seeing an increase in academic achievement as measured by WIDA assessments, evidence of learning data and teacher staff voice data and student voice data on their learning experiences. There is a direct alignment to the DCIP goals of digital learning and support, mitigating learning disruption, supporting students' wellbeing, in addition to meeting the needs of the most impacted schools and students. Next slide.
Greetings, board members. In addition to a professional learning focus on technology and the ELL curriculum, funds were used to support staff development and professional learning on restorative justice practices and social, emotional learning curriculum as well as special education compensatory services. Specifically, Esser funds were used to ensure all MCPS school-based teachers were trained on the fundamentals of restorative justice and select cohorts, one schools, were trained on the implementation of the SEL curriculum, the Leader in Me. The anticipated results include a decrease in the number of suspensions, referrals and a greater use of the following student competencies as a result of Leader in Me: self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making. The impact will be measured by quarterly, by quarterly suspension and referral data and stakeholder voice data, which is collected annually. A second area of funding has been and will continue to be providing learning and implementation of special education compensatory services. We anticipate that all special education staff are equipped to conduct compensatory services and recovery services for students based on their individual educational plans and that these services have been and will be provided effectively. The impact will be measured through the Maryland State Department of Education Online IEP Comprehensive Data Collection Tool as we monitor the level and the quality of the service provided. Effective professional development serves as a foundational step in the implementation of social, emotional curriculum and compensatory services and is directly aligned with the DCIP goals of mitigating learning disruption, supporting students' wellbeing and meeting the needs of our most impacted schools and students. Ms. Dawson will now present information about operations.
Next slide, please. In considering operations to mitigate COVID-19 and provide the highest indoor air quality, MCPS has assessed all existing systems, replaced HVAC filters to the highest minimum efficiency reporting values, or MERV, filter. Added additional air cleaners were necessary and extended HVAC system runtime to flush air. Monitoring is continued by the replacement of HVAC's filters, increased frequency of air filter changes from three to four times per year, portable air cleaners in specific classrooms, offices, health rooms and areas that are used as isolation rooms for symptomatic students. The impact is the measures will help improve indoor air quality and ensure the best learning experience for students and staff. Next, we consider providing quality space for the Virtual Academy. We leased space for the Virtual Academy, including providing new infrastructure, cost of wiring and Wi-Fi and other materials. We expect to monitor this through staff survey and families on facility central location, ease of access, supply, materials and pickup and testing. The impact is to provide the best conditions for learning in the Virtual Academy and resourcing of materials for students. Next, we have the mitigation strategies of COVID. The delivery of PPE to all 209 schools and district offices, including adult and child-sized masks, gloves, face shields, hand sanitizer, non-hazardous wipes and cleaning supplies for cleaning and disinfecting school offices and buildings. We will monitor by the ongoing procurement to provide consistent supplies to all schools and offices, work with content supervisors to ensure proper PE supplies to all disciplines, survey schools and offices to determine efficiencies improvements and maintain cleaning expectations. Ensuring, the impact is ensuring all CDC and DHHS guidelines are followed regarding PPE deployment and usage to ensure proper mitigation strategies for student and staff safety. Next, access to water filling stations, providing two water bottle filling stations for each 209 schools. As we've mentioned before, that is delayed, but again, we are able to provide bottles to schools as necessary and as often as they need. Implementation, again, is the fall and daily monitoring and cleaning protocol will be followed. The impact is maintaining a healthy school environment and increasing sustainability practices. Finally, internal and external stakeholder groups, including experts in the field to advise a COVID-19 mitigation purpose was the establishment of the multi-stakeholder COVID-19 committee. Our interim superintendent of schools, Dr. McKnight, developed a five-point plan that included the establishment of the COVID-19 Operations Advisory Committee. The committee is comprised of MCPS staff and students, representatives from the employee associations, MCCPTA, community representatives from multiple organizations, as well as representatives from DHHS. Committee feedback will help guide the district's work in responding to COVID-19 throughout the year. The committee first convened on October 7th and has standing meetings each Thursday. This committee provides an opportunity for our stakeholders, both internal and external, to share concerns about our schools, facilities and provide recommendations to correct and mitigate COVID-19 and advise actionable steps for staff to explore and enact. We will use a survey to analyze impact. At this point, I turn the presentation over to my colleague, Ms. Sharon.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. As you've heard throughout the presentation today, the allocation of Esser funds directly aligns with the work of the DCIP groups and how we innovate the educational experience of staff and students as we move forward. Next slide, please. As the DCIP project teams have reconvened this year, a critical component of their work, as I mentioned earlier, will be to monitor and review the implementation data for a variety of these items. In the project teams, as we roll out various strategies, the stakeholder groups will play a role in reviewing and analyzing the impact of this work and providing recommendations moving forward to ensure that what we implement is serving students and staff well. And if it's not, make innovative recommendations and provide input on changes that may be necessary. For example, we've spoken a lot today about the SEL curriculum. The wellbeing team, DCIP group, will be closely monitoring the impact of Leader in Me. Part of that monitoring, evaluation and recommendation process will include the project team doing a deeper dive as a group to better understand the curriculum rollout and the training plans for Cohort One schools. They will then review the intended and anticipated results and actual results, as well as the implementation data and feedback in order to make recommendations for the Cohort Two schools that will be doing the implementation for next year. This cycle of Plan, Do, Study, Act will be an important process that all project teams will engage in as they move throughout the year to ensure we're meeting the needs of our staff and students in alignment with the goals of the board's strategic plan. As we stated previously, Esser is a multi-year grant provided to school districts. Eventually, we know the money will run out. And the DCIP project teams will be critical in analyzing the return on investment that these strategies produce so that we can best evaluate what strategies may be necessary to keep long-term in our operating budget as we move forward. Next slide, please. At this time, we have concluded our presentation. I will turn it over to Ms. Wolf for discussion.
Thank you. If you turn on your light if you have a question, Dr. Daka?
Only one question. You're hiring all these, like, assistant administrators and the counselors and all. That will have to be built into our next budget? Do you see these people as permanent hires? That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
I think that is something that we are looking at, their need for sure, and the idea of building them into the budget would be a multi-year process. And the amount, again, would be what we would need to determine over time.
Ms. Mandrowski.
Yeah, thanks. I just, really quickly, we had talked about this before, but as we're getting ready to start looking at the operations budget, we know how important professional development is, and we need time for that, and with additional time comes additional funding. We want to try and keep academic disruption at a minimum as much as possible. Can you speak at all to the ways that you're looking at providing professional development in a manner that does not disruptive to teachers taking, being not with the students? So in other words, you know, what are we doing to be able to further as much summer activities or extending the amount of time that our staff is on, you know, being paid throughout the summer, essentially, things like that?
Dr. Muzatsos, I don't know if you want to chime in on that one?
Yep. I'll take that one. Hi there. So there are a few different things we're looking at. We just completed, we just asked for feedback on a survey, looking at if folks would, more interested during school time or during the summer to participate in professional learning. And so we'll be reviewing that data and figuring out when the best time will be to offer professional learning. And mainly this year, we're focused on looking at professional learning integrated into meetings that already exist, so they're not pull-out sessions that take teachers away from students for the exact reasons that you mentioned, but what in the structures that already exist in the school day for teachers to do common planning or work with their staff development teachers or their, the coaches or the reading specialist in the schools? Can we work with the train-the-trainer model and get the professional learning in that way? So that's one of the major ways we're looking at delivering professional development this year. The other is a lot of PDO courses, technology worked really hard to offer PDO courses that teachers can take at the time that works best for them. So it could be after school or, you know, during their breaks, so that, again, it doesn't take away from instructional time.
I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that we're compensating people if they're working on their own time, and I know that they're already losing a lot of planning time because of everything else that we're trying to juggle. So I appreciate the fact that you're being cognizant of that at all times.
Ms. Harris.
Yeah, thank you. And I would just add on to Ms. Mandowski. I know, as a teacher last year, started the 2020-21 school year, when we were bringing on Synergy, and I, you know, was one of the students, the teachers who had to transfer from Google Classroom to Canvas, and it was a tremendous amount. There were resources available, absolutely. You mentioned PDO, lots of units on there that teachers could take at their own, on their own, but you still, that is still time that you have to find, and you're trying to learn a tool or adapt a tool, and it is, it really just is a lot that teachers have to fit it in, and we certainly weren't paid, you know, for extra for, you know, doing those things at nine o'clock at night. I did want to ask a question, following up too, on the middle and wellness staff that we're adding, counselors. So you mentioned 20 counselors directed to highly impacted schools, 18 others, 50 social workers. Where are we deploying the social workers, and are they on-boarded, or are we still, is this still in process?
I do believe it's still in process because it's ESSER III, but I will turn it over to Ms. Rubin.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So this is very much in process, and this will be a collaborative effort between MCPS, HHS. As a matter of fact, Ms. Harris, we had a meeting with Dr. Crowell last week, and we have a consultation meeting planned for next week, because as you know, the hiring of these individuals, we're really competing against, everyone is looking to get them on-boarded, and we came up with some really, we think, innovative ideas about how we can do that. For example, if we hire an LSW with the clinical licensure, that is only going to be available to then allow us the opportunity to hire those that are still looking for those clinical hours, where there are more of a variety of those individuals available, then that will allow us to staff at a faster pace, and then determine alongside our colleagues existing programs that we already have out there, linkages to learning, where exactly is the need? We're going to use those existing maps, take a look at some of the new, more recent data we have to be able to deploy appropriately. So we're still in the planning stages, but very robust planning.
That's exciting. And I know many of us have heard for many, many, many years that our school counselors have been advocating us to achieve something I don't really think any school systems in the country do, but the A, the American Counseling Association's recommendation is one, one counselor per 250 students, and that all counselors spending at least 80% of their time working directly with or indirectly for students. So when we achieve this hiring, does anybody know where we will be at in regard to that teacher, or that, and I would just say counselors and including that licensed clinical social workers, those kind of mental wellness professionals, what will be as far as those professional staff per, one per number of students?
It takes a while to come on. I'm sorry. So we hope to be able to match, and this is something that we've talked a lot about with the school psychologists as well as the counselors. We just have not been able to match some of the national numbers for where we should be. As we proceed with this evaluative process, we're hoping to look across the board, and I think that will be the interesting thing. So to look at the school psychologists, look at the school counselors, look at the social workers, and then really be able to assess what you're talking about, what is that student-to-provide ratio? And then I think more importantly, really take a look at the impact of the services on the students through a variety of mediums. I don't think only suspension and referrals, but also academics, right? The grades, what are the outcomes that we're seeing? So I think it's an exciting time for exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, and have, have we, I know one of the things we talked about possibly in the spring was, we have some school psychologists who are 10-month-plus-20-day employees instead of full-time, and one of the things they had mentioned was to be, if they were full-time, there would be more opportunity available for them to do things like sponsor our minds matter clubs and things like that. Have we looked at transitioning those of our school psychologists who want to, who currently are 10-plus-20 and want to be full-time to full-time?
Ms. Harris, I will chime in on that one because the team and I have been talking about this now, I think since the beginning of this year. We've taken an opportunity to look at some of our positions and also look at the impact of, it may be finances over time, but what have we had to cut over the years that really speaks to there being a significant need now presented in the area? And the psychologist is actually one. When that position was changed to become a 10-month position some years ago, we can look at it, it added greater impact on what other position? The counselors, because then that meant if the psychologists are not there, then the counselors are taking on more of that responsibility of wraparound support. The best analogy I can say is Robin Peter to Pay Paul, is how we can look at it. So that's one of the positions that we have been looking at, to see how we're able to make some adjustments so that we can meet the need. And again, it's been a conversation, I think there has to be a deeper evaluation and analysis of exactly how we do that in steps, because we do want to be able to maintain what we put in place. So just look out, I mean, it may be some of the things that we're bringing forward soon to have a more in-depth discussion about. And I think, as we talk about psychologists, another part that I'll add in in this conversation that we had, what parts of their work is taking up more of their time? They shared before, testing, the assessment takes up a significant amount of time. So as we talk about what's appropriate for contracting services, seems like an absolute natural area to be able to contract out testing services so that our psychologists can actually spend the time doing some of the things that we need them to do. So kind of weigh in that with, if they were changed to 10 months from 12 months a couple years, or some years ago, and then in addition to that, their responsibility of testing or providing assessments to students is taking up more of their time, then they're probably sending maybe 25% of their time doing the things that we actually need them to do and the things that they enjoy doing. So I elevate that as a conversation we have been having, exactly about evaluating those types of positions and how they even match up with what our current needs are or not. So just stay tuned, and we'll talk more about that.
Good. Yeah, I know, because probably most school psychologists didn't spend all that time in education and training to just do testing. And so this one, it goes back to Ms. Dawson, and I don't know if Mr. Adams is still around, the indoor air quality. So the things that you mentioned go to measures we're taking to try to make sure we're maintaining satisfactory indoor air quality. I'm wondering what we're, are we doing anything to do any ongoing monitoring of indoor air quality, particularly our schools that we know had more challenges initially when we started looking at the efficiency of our HVAC?
Yeah, that's a great question. Mr. Adams, I know we have talked about that, so I'm going to have you pick that up.
I will apologize. I was having a Zoom issue as I clicked over. I know you talked about the efficiencies of the mechanical systems, but could you just repeat, just to make sure I'm answering correctly here? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I was asking, we were talking about indoor air quality and the measures that we're taking in schools to try to maintain adequate indoor air quality, and the question was, are we, what are we doing to actually measure the indoor air quality, particularly at some of our schools that we know have been a little bit more challenged?
Yes, and so, great question, and we've actually started to actively go in and do CO2 monitoring with our teams. We're scheduled to meet with some MCCPTA folks to talk about how we can expand the program. We've partnered with the University of Maryland to see how they can support us in these measurements, as well as we've piloted a few new installations of CO2 tools in schools. Gaithersburg Middle School is one that jumps to mind where we are going in and measuring, making adjustments if necessary to ensure our spaces are performing the way they're intended to.
And I'll just make one more pitch for some of our students who are really concerned with issues of sustainability, maybe to the extent that some of these are using handheld tools to go to designated spaces to take measurements, operationalizing those students to be part of the work as part of their Green Team Sustainability Clubs, that kind of thing, might be a way to maybe take some of the burdens off of staff.
Exactly. So we are actually meeting at Poolsville High School tomorrow morning to meet with some students, as well as some of the MCCPTA and other MCPS staff, to talk with them in terms of, you know, just ideas that we can explore there and how we can expand it throughout the county. So yes, absolutely. Great question.
Thank you.
Ms. Silvestri.
This is a follow-up, because I know we're getting close to the end here. I forgot to ask this in the first section, if I could get some data on the virtual academy, who is attending at which times, and if we have demographic breakdowns? If you recall, I was very interested, as were my colleagues, making sure that there was an option for students that have to work, and I don't mean part-time, I mean to support their family. And so I want to see if, if they're taking advantage of that, and who is taking advantage of that? So as a follow-up, please, thank you.
Ms. Silvestri, just for clarity, are we trying to get at attendance and engagement for those who are enrolled in the virtual academy?
Well, the evening session was kind of...
For the evening?
Told to us to be like an option for kids that have to work full-time during the day. And so I want to see who's participating, and yes, if attendance and engagement is a measure of success, then yes, I want to know that as well.
Okay. So just, we don't, the evening program has not started yet. That is what they're working on right now. So they're working, they're trying to get that started, as Dr. Trendkamp said, for the spring. So outside of that, we can give you all that information for the, during the day, but we don't have evening program data. Dr. Trendkamp?
I can just add to that as well. We do have a number of students who are in the virtual academy who do work full-time, but their work schedules vary. So often, we've, we've arranged the virtual academy day schedule so that students, a lot of these students are juniors and seniors, they may, many do not need a full course load because they've already earned their credits. Even if they do earn their course load, we've been able to schedule them for the morning, where then they leave and go to work for the afternoon and evening, or they work in the morning shift, and then they come to school for the afternoon. We don't have as many that do that, but we have a number of them that we've been able to schedule around so that they can, in fact, go to work. So we do...
If you could share the data, that would be great, with graphics as well. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I want to thank you for the presentation. I know it's been a long day, but this was very helpful to me and I'm sure to my colleagues. I think if, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous. We are adjourned.